All right, I have 6:30. Everyone is back. I will call the council meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
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 Happy to be here.
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 Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up is audience participation. As a reminder, you'll be called in order of signing up. There's a time limit of five minutes per speaker. Your time cannot be ceded to the next speaker. We ask that everyone participate in the orderly function of the meeting. That means no cheering, no booing, no applause. And I think most importantly, the quasi judicial land use process is a very specific process that's laid out in the law. The public comment period for the brave application was at the previous meeting. So we cannot accept any more public comments about the brave application. I see there are people here signed up to speak about traffic and safety. You are welcome to speak about that. But if you start to speak about the brave application or anything related to it, I will cut you off. Okay? So please respect us. I will in turn respect you. We're glad that you're here and we appreciate your input. So first up is Richard Abels. And remember, when you come up, please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilors. I was here last month and in my remarks, I referenced the eight hundred pound, an eight hundred pound elephant in my comments. And I believe it was Councilman Holland that later referenced it, re-referenced it as the elephant in the room. And so tonight, I'm going to reference the elephant in the room, which is the already existing horrible traffic problem and traffic management problem that we face in the village. Last month, this room was packed with your constituents asking, saying, please take care of traffic while keeping our citizens, our drive-through neighbors, our residents, our students, our teachers, Kent, all these people, safe as they are using our city. And so I'm now going to address my remarks to those of you that are continuing on council for January, because the rest of you are going to be going home and thanks a lot for your service. But those of you that are continuing, I have a few questions for you. What are you going to do about the already existing traffic problem on Colorado from Hampton to Quincy? Are you going to continue to work with CDOT in the city of Denver to increase the timing of the lights? Because I got to tell you, they may have gotten changed, but they haven't gotten fixed, both north and southbound. Are you going to reduce the size of the median just south of Colorado Boulevard so vehicles can actually use it to turn when the blinking light is there? If there's five cars ahead of you, you can't get to that left turn lane because it's blocked. So the whole blinking yellow, you can't go until the northbound guys go ahead of you. You should fix that. Are you going to create three lanes of northbound traffic? North, coming up to Hampton, west, east, and north? There's two, but it creates its own bottleneck. You've heard, 20, 30, 40 cars waiting to get backed up. Are you going to call them traffic on Mansfield from Colorado to Happy Canyon? You should. Are you going to look at other circulation patterns within the northeast quadrant of the city? You should. A week ago, at 10 after 8, I was heading southbound from Welsher Golf Course, I wasn't golfing, towards Hampton to get into Covington. Forty cars were in front of me. Every one of them was going straight. They weren't going east, they weren't going west. It took four cycles for 40 cars to go southbound on Hampton, on Colorado at 8:10 a.m. Were they going to work? Were they going to Kent? Were they going through the village? I also saw in that same wait, cars turning right, cutting through the church, cutting back around the church and getting on Colorado Boulevard to avoid that traffic. Sorry about that. Oh, good. I still got plenty of time. Are you going to rectify this with the city? Or are you going to just say, oh, it's the city, oh, it's CDOT? You really should. You acknowledge the problem, but you haven't done anything about it, with all due respect, except to say it's bad. Well, you're right. Congested traffic isn't an applicant's job looking for approval. It's yours. And until these areas are fixed or reviewed or adjusted, it's only going to get worse. What are you going to do about it? We ask respectively for action, and we deserve action. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Next is Karen.
Ogaard.
Ogaard. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. So my name is Karen Ogaard. I live at 27 Covington Drive. I'm here to alert you to a problem you're having in the community. Maybe you've heard about it. It's called traffic. We've had some traffic issues on Colorado Boulevard from Hampton all the way down to Quincy, and it is spilling out into the neighbors such as Mansfield and other community streets, as frustrated drivers try to find a way to cut through and, and avoid the traffic on Colorado Boulevard. Over 60 of your constituents have communicated to you over the concern, and frankly, they continue to feel unrepresented by city council and unheard, as Dick had kind of mentioned. You've received enough information about that, but I'm actually more confident that you, as city council members, have several very creative ways or ideas that are within your power to fix the problem before we have a larger safety issue in the, in the neighborhood. As a concerned neighbor, I would love to know what you guys plan to do. Tonight, however, is your opportunity to take steps to remedy the traffic problem, and I say before the end of your term. Because I'm so confident that you will actually take action on behalf of your constituents, that you will advance, come to some solutions, and I want to thank you in advance for faithfully helping to improve the safety of our neighborhood and fairly representing your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tom Conroy.
Good evening. Tom Conroy, 3825 South Colorado Boulevard. We do not live in Covington. We live on Colorado Boulevard, and our only access in and out of our property is either turning left on Colorado Boulevard to go north or right to go south. The traffic, we lived there 31 years. The traffic has continued to build up every year. We see backups from Mansfield past our driveway, particularly in the morning, because a lot of the traffic that's coming in from the north is actually turning on Mansfield and going over to either Dahlia or Happy Canyon to go up to Quincy so they can avoid the congestion at Colorado and Quincy. Again, I have to reiterate that we support the previous comments. Things do need to be done to control the traffic. It's not just school traffic. There's a lot of cut-through traffic, and it's getting worse. Coming over here tonight, we had to wait till the light turned at Colorado and Hampton, and the traffic coming through passed by before we could get out of our driveway. It's that way in the morning. It's almost impossible for us in the morning at 8 o'clock to go out and turn left to go north. Typically, we have to turn south, go to Mansfield, go over to Dahlia, and back down to Hampton to get on Hampton. So again, I want to reiterate, we do have a serious traffic problem on Colorado Boulevard. It is not getting better. It's been getting worse every year, and it's going to continue that way whether or not there's any other changes made to access to Colorado Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Conroy.
Yes, I also live at 3825 South Colorado Boulevard, and I want to point, I have two points to be made. One, I think that the lack of sympathy toward our problems, for instance, at quarter of four, a couple, last week actually, or not, before Thanksgiving, I had to wait for four lights in the afternoon, quarter of four in the afternoon, to get out and going north on Hampton to my salon appointment at 695 in Bel Caro. Okay? So we have a real problem. I guess I'm making three points. So as not to extend my, the time allotted to me. A second problem is that I believe that the sanguine approach to our, to our situation, our traffic situation, is because none of these people here live where we do, and they don't know what's going on. So when you don't know what's happening, you can sit and say, oh, my gosh, these people are really exaggerating. They're just crying wolf because nothing can be that bad. And it, as my husband said prior to me, things have been getting very bad. You can go through four lights to get in or out. So my, I am not as confident, although I think Karen is very optimistic, the person who spoke earlier, I would like a real traffic study to be done. Because the one that we heard was fallacious, amateurish, and completely wrong. I don't know how these people could call themselves traffic experts and give such a nonsensical evaluation of the traffic problem. So my final point is, I would like to have a real, a real, authentic traffic study of the situation with Hampton and Colorado Boulevard done by competent and not incompetent traffic specialists. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. And last is Stephen, is it Foster? Or is it Fenton? I think it's Fenton. Thank you.
May remember me. I had a show and tell. Again, I have show and tell.
Well, we need to see what the show and tell is first. Sorry. Yes, okay. Yes. Thank you.
Please allow me to introduce, reintroduce myself. I am Steve Fenton, F-E-N-T-O-N. I'm a resident of Cherry Hills Village and presented at the November 19, 2024 city council meeting. The safety concerns PowerPoint that I distributed highlighted safety issues in our neighborhood. As an accident reconstruction engineer, I am certain that making left turns in our neighborhood will lead to crashes, particularly during peak travel times. Please be aware that left-turning vehicles in our area need sufficient space to merge onto northbound Colorado Boulevard in our neighborhood. When northbound traffic is congested at that, at the intersection of Colorado Boulevard and Hampton, there is often not enough room to complete a left turn. This can result in southbound vehicles colliding with left-turning vehicles. The risk of such accidents is particularly high during peak hours when parents and teenagers are rushing to get to school on time. I have been researching the traffic patterns used by comparable neighborhoods to minimize safety concerns. In all these cases, neighborhoods have, and responsible people like you have prohibited left turns. One example is Rivers Academy in Alpharetta, Georgia, a suburb of Atlanta.
Mr. Fenton, I'm going to interrupt you for just a minute. Is your, is the nature of your testimony here tonight that you don't think the city should allow any left turns?
In certain areas, yes. And, and I would like to point out in those areas, when I get to it, it's.
Unfortunately, your presentation is very specific to one scenario. The examples you're providing are both very specific to that scenario. If you could keep your comments to more general traffic comments, please.
Yes, I, I'm, I'm speaking very general about these comments, but I'm referring other, to other.
You're, you're referring specifically to schools making non-left turns out of a particular parking lot. If you could keep the conversation more about the traffic problem within the city and not related to the application that's pending before the city council. Thank you.
So again, left turns are, let's just get to the federal data on left turns. Federal data shows that left turns are five times more dangerous than right turns. In fact, it is UPS's policy to minimize left turns. I think that responsible engineers and council people should look at areas where left turns are occurring, especially in high-traffic locations, and make sure that we are minimizing the possibility of accidents. I have two examples I'd like to show where cities have looked at left turns and saw that there were potentials for, for problems with left turns. The first example is in Greenwood Village.
These are specific to schools. If you could keep them, I don't think you're suggesting, for example, that the Conroy's should not be allowed to make a left turn out of their driveway. So if you could keep the comments to more specific general traffic, or less specific general traffic comments. Thank you.
Well, as a traffic engineer, I can tell you that, and I think everybody here is smart enough to understand that we're talking about when there's a lot of congestion and a lot of people wanting to make left turns. Now, the Conroy's, if you're going to have a big party, you're going to have hundreds of cars making left turns. I would suggest that you not allow that, especially if it's going to happen on a day-to-day basis. And I think that they would probably have to come to you and ask for permission to do so if they were going to do that on a day-to-day basis. I think you would consider whether that is safe or not, and try to build that into your safety plan as responsible councilmen. I hope that you will be more open and thoughtful and considerate when considering our concerns and the concerns of all those that were here a month ago that think that moving forward is not safe and not in our best.
Excuse me, that again is referring to the Brave Academy application.
Of course.
Do you have, you were explicitly indicated that your comments can't be about.
I, I never said anything about brave.
You just said to, anyway, your time's up. Thank you.
Well, I see I have 52 seconds left.
Feel free to continue.
Okay, thank you.
But not about Brave Academy or the application pending.
I, I think you all understand our concerns.
I think we do.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have reports from members of city boards and commissions. Is there anyone in the room? There is not. Moving on, the next item is the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Now, we will continue with unfinished business. Item A is the continuation of the public hearing of Resolution 25, Series 2024, approving a site plan amendment to increase enrollment at Brave Academy to a maximum of 208 students in grades K through 12 at 3651 South Colorado Boulevard. This is being continued from the public hearing on November 19. At that meeting, when we discussed the continuance, we indicated that we would be picking up where we left off in the public hearing steps, which was the motion and deliberation part of the process. But before we actually picked that up, I know that there has been a lot of consternation and frustration with this process. 99% of the job of serving city council is to represent the citizens of the city. But there is 1% that is not acting as a representative government, but acting as a judge of facts. And so I wanted to. And so I wanted to ask our city attorney to just provide a brief refresher to everyone here and for the benefit of everyone in the room about what the quasi judicial process is and why it has the limitations that it has.
Thank you, Mayor. As you said, so elected officials, typically we think of them as performing the act of legislating, i.e. making law based on policy of broad, um, general application and balancing questions of judgment and discretion. But local elected officials are different. They have to wear a few different hats, which includes functions besides making law, such as in this matter, in which they're required as a body to make a determination by applying criteria established in law, i.e. in the municipal code, to the facts of a specific case that are developed at a notice public hearing. The point of this is to allow for fairness. Um, and so this principle was actually, it's been articulated in numerous court decisions, including a 1988 Colorado Supreme Court case called Cherry Hills Resort Development Company versus the City of Cherry Hills Village, interestingly enough. Uh, so courts have deemed these types of matters where you're applying the criteria in your code on certain applications, licenses, as well as some land use applications, as quasi, uh, to the facts in those cases, as quasi judicial. So I like to think of the city council members in cases like these as wearing wigs and judicial robes. And to that end, the public hearings that are conducted in this manner need to be, take place in an open fashion so that all parties can hear and weigh the evidence and respond to it as it arises and not have additional contacts or discussions outside of the forum in which all parties are present. So that maintains a, a record that is of integrity and that can be relied upon by this body to make decisions based on the facts developed at the hearing. How's that?
Thank you. I think the key words there are that it's not as discretionary as many of the other decisions that come before the council. And while I understand that that may not be satisfying to you, that is the legal requirement that we are all working under. So with that being said, I'd like to resume the public hearing of the Brave application. We left off, we continued the hearing with an, in an effort to request specific information from staff. And so I would like to have the presentation from Director Workman about the follow-up to those action items.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, and good evening to the rest of city council. Well stated, and hence my first slide, so well done. As was just referenced, the proceedings on November 19th were continued to this evening, and staff received three specific directions from council. That will be the subject of staff's presentation this evening, and certainly were available for questions at the end. The first direction that we as staff received was to review the analysis provided by Dave Rubel Jr. to determine if the information provided in that traffic analysis changed the opinion of the city's consultant, Peters and Yaffe, related to the Brave Academy traffic analysis. The second direction that staff received was to have Peters and Yaffe also review the safety information provided by Mr. Steve Fenton to determine if that information provided, uh, any, uh, if that, if that information provided in that analysis changed the opinion of our consultant related to the Brave Academy traffic analysis. The third specific direction that staff received was to make certain amendments to the development agreement, those that were presented at the, at the meeting on the 19th by Counselor Holland. In subsequent slides, you will see those changes incorporated into certain language within the development agreement. Those changes are, are provided for you in red. Additionally, we also received direction to make any other changes to the development agreement that the applicant was willing to make based on the, the information that was discovered, I guess for lack of a better term, during that public hearing. We'll take these in the order in which the direction was given. Peters and Yaffe did do an analysis from Mr. Dave Rubel. Ultimately, their metrics were either not requirement based on the local or industry standard, they were not within the scope of the application. Certain elements of that analysis are appropriate for consideration as part of the future traffic study that Brave would be required to do, um, uh, at, at the, at the 150 threshold identified in the development agreement. Additionally, there were six recommended mitigation measures. Five of those six measures are not recommended by Peters and Yaffe, or they require some additional analysis prior to further consideration. Uh, measure number two, which was the measure to paint do not block striping on Colorado, may be considered and evaluated by the city.
Can I, can I interrupt you there?
Absolutely.
Just for a question, cause, and I read that and it was good. I struggled with the language, not within the scope of the application, because that could mean two things. One is, it actually could just mean that it's not based on local industry standards. In other words, something was outside of the normal standards that you'd apply, i.e. it's outside the scope. Another would be, well, we could have concluded that, but we didn't. It's outside the scope of what we defined. And I struggled with that, and I'm hoping it wasn't the latter, I'm hoping it was the former, but could you comment and provide some context about what you mean by not within the scope?
Yes, sir, we'd be happy to do that. I was actually very well teed up for Mr. Snyder to, to say a few words on, on that, on this issue.
Uh, thank you for the question. Um, so I'll address the question about within or outside of scope. Um, and when going through the scoping phase for the analysis, we go through a process of identifying what's going to be required, what's unique to the development, what's standard to development, and through that process, come up with the scope. And so outside of scope, one example I'll give is the Hamden, Colorado intersection. Uh, we spoke last time about how the HAM study was completed recently, and as a result of coordination with several agencies and an extensive analysis of not only the corridor, but key, uh, critical intersections, including the Hamden, Colorado intersection, um, that produced both an analysis and recommendations. That coordination effort and that analysis, um, after a study like the HAMs was completed, was not going to yield any additional, um, information that would aid in the site applicant, site plan amendment application. Uh, so that's one example of within or without scope is we're not expecting the applicant to have a meeting with all of those agencies, review the recommendations of the HAMs, and try to understand why they recommended what they did.
Okay, good. That makes sense. And then I know. I know Mr. Snyder has a, a few follow-up comments related to specifically his analysis of, of the, um, analysis that was provided as part of last, the proceedings last meeting.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. Um, so I'd just real quick elaborate on, on what my review of the, um, the Dave Rubel analysis included. So when, it was a detailed analysis of the considerations and recommendations provided in that analysis. This included items such as study area, traffic forecasting, trip distribution, queuing, multimodal, uh, safety, to name a few. And, uh, and comparing that against the requirements that we implemented on Brave for their traffic analysis. And so as mentioned on the slide, we compared that against the local, um, and industry, industry standards we consider that includes the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code, Arapahoe County Traffic Impact Guidelines, Highway Capacity Manual, Institute of Traffic Engineers, as well as ASHTO roadway and geometric design manuals. So using that information to identify if any of the elements discussed by DB and out, the Dave Rubel analysis were applicable and appropriate for the Brave Academy traffic analysis. Um, so between that and, as mentioned, the consideration of what's in the scope of the applicant to address and, uh, bring recommendations for improvements for our review and approval of the Brave Academy traffic analysis remained unchanged. But, uh, as, as mentioned, as Paul mentioned, that I did identify the elements of the DB analysis that should be an ongoing consideration. That includes, um, you know, operations on Colorado Boulevard. As new information becomes available and further, and the city coordinates further with, uh, other agencies like Denver and CDOT on what can be done at the intersection, continue to evaluate those as progress is made through those coordination efforts.
Yes, sir.
Let me try and make sure I understood what you said. If we, if you were to structure a site, a, a traffic study based on the site application, all the criteria would have been met, uh, conforming to city code, industry standards, and the like. Yes, you had the other study on Hamden, which might have been under other circumstances, uh, part of this, but at the same time, there wouldn't have been any news had you restudied that, you had the sufficient information. Did I get that right?
Yes, thank you for the question, and you do have that right. That's, sorry for any confusion.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, we will continue with the, uh, review of the Fenton analysis related to the, the safety information that was provided again at the last meeting. Uh, again, similar in terms of response, in terms of, uh, and we'll, again, we'll have Mr. Snyder speak a little bit more in the detail of, of how he reviewed that information. Uh, but they did review the crash data analysis, the circulation plan, multimodal assessment, um, including site distance, conflict points, and queuing. Uh, the, the review included, uh, the review of the Brave traffic analysis included, uh, an evaluation of visibility at the site access. Uh, Mr. Snyder will speak to doing a site visit at the location, uh, and addressing a lot of those issues that were provided in that handout. And again, um, Peter and Yaffe's opinion and recommendation for the approval of the Brave Academy expansion, traffic analysis report remained unchanged after reviewing that information. Again, I will, uh, turn it over to Mr. Snyder and ask him to speak a little more, uh, related to the details.
Uh, my review of the, uh, Fenton, uh, handout was similar to that of the DB analysis, went through each element and concern raised in the handout and evaluated it against the, uh, uh, analysis of the Brave Academy traffic study. And, uh, as shown on the slide there, that included elements such as site distance, queuing, conflict points, and multimodal, uh, safety. So as part of my, as part of my, uh, review, um, again, referencing local and industry standards, um, evaluating what was, um, uh, required as part of the scoping phase, uh, my approval of the Brave Academy traffic study remained unchanged. I do want to acknowledge that safety is, is very important when it comes to trophy, traffic, especially within school zones. Um, I certainly appreciate Mr. Fenton's, uh, concerns, um, especially related to site distance at the site access. As Paul mentioned, um, as part of the initial, uh, review of the Brave, um, traffic analysis, I did complete a, uh, site visit, uh, reviewed visibility at each of the intersections within the study area. My review considered the site distance requirements of ASHTO. They have a manual, um, that addresses roadway and geometric design. They have several cases that they discuss related to various movements and the site distance requirements or recommendations for each of those movements. Um, and so my, uh, analysis reviewed case B, which evaluates left turns and right turns from minor streets. And you have two elements, you have intersection site distance and you have stopping site distance. And the primary, uh, difference between the two is, um, stopping site distance is the minimum distance that a vehicle needs in order to stop to avoid conflict. So that's dependent on a few different factors, mainly speed. You also take in to, into consideration, um, grade of your roadway. So if you have a slope, um, or a hill to your street, um, you consider, uh, you can consider other elements like weather, most of the time you assume dry conditions. Um, and when considering intersection site distance, that is the distance that a person needs to see in order to make the, uh, turning movement without significantly impacting traffic flow into, on the road they're turning onto. So, um, for this roadway, um, I believe Mr. Fenton's analysis considered, uh, the design speed of 40 miles per hour. And so in, uh, you have a, um, stopping site distance, I'll just bring up my table, if you give me just a moment. The stopping site distance for a design speed of 40 miles per hour, and I'll just clarify real quick, the posted speed is 30 miles per hour. Design speed is typically the speed you designed the road for. Um, and, uh, it, it indicates, uh, that the distinguishment there is people are gonna generally drive the speed they feel comfortable going, uh, and, uh, so a lot of times you try and put the posted speed at that speed, it's called the 85th percentile, and that's the speed. That typically represents the, the majority of, uh, folks and what speed they feel comfortable going. So the design speed is the conservative speed, and, uh, you wanna base your site distance off of that. So for 40 miles per hour, the stopping site distance is 305, but the intersection site distance is 445. So you have those two differences in that site distance length. And when, as part of our review, uh, if a development is not, um, making changes to an intersection, and there is not a history of crashes, as evidenced by the crash analysis that Brave, uh, the Brave traffic study completed, um, we evaluate it based on the stopping site distance, uh, criteria to ensure that enough visibility is, uh, present for folks to stop, say if there's a conflict. That said, with the trail, um, just next to Colorado Boulevard, I think site distance and visibility, um, should be an ongoing, uh, topic and something to be monitored as, um, traffic is evaluated on Colorado Boulevard. Certainly, there could be, um, improvements, uh, considered, uh, further by the city, but in, uh, regards to the Brave traffic analysis, that is what my review, uh, included. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Counselor Eber.
Um, Mr. Snyder, if you could, um, walk me through a little bit again, if you would, on the site distances. When you talk about the design speed at 40, I, I, I wanna come up with why two professionals, and, and, you know, you can, you can go ahead and speak freely about the limitations of another analysis, is what would be helpful to me. Did Mr. Fenton say site distances and stopping distances are at 40 miles an hour because he used a design speed of 40 miles an hour? And that's why he got higher numbers and therefore made a determination that it's unsafe versus your analysis that said it was safe?
There you go. Um, thank you for the question. Yeah, so I did not do a great job of explaining the design speed, I apologize, but essentially the Fenton handout considered the, uh, the recommended timing gap that a driver needs to make a left turn without significantly slowing traffic, say, on Colorado Boulevard. And when we evaluate an existing intersection, uh, that is currently operating, um, under the configuration that it's going to in the proposed condition, we evaluate the stopping site condition and the crash history, and that tells us that it, there's not an existing problem, and so. And that tells us that there's not an existing problem, and so no improvements are required to address site distance.
So based on the fact, I guess I'm hearing, you, you say that based on the fact that there hasn't been accidents, the site distance is good enough regardless of what it is? Am I, help me, help me, I'm sorry that I'm so slow on this, but...
No, I appreciate the question, so...
We haven't had crashes, therefore it's good enough.
That indicates to me that visibility, visibility at the access is adequate, and so in reviewing the traffic analysis, that was the requirement I was upholding the Brave Academy study to.
Is that the industry standard, or is an intersection supposed to have a stopping distance based on some calculation by somebody that has put it in a book?
No, stopping site distance is your minimum distance that you want a driver to be able to see. There, and the other term is intersection site distance, and that's creating enough visibility to make these movements without significantly impacting traffic flow. So rather than providing, rather than a site distance that just ensures vehicles can stop on time if there is a conflict, the intersection site distance allows additional visibility for drivers to enter a gap in traffic without the traffic, traffic flow being impacted. In other words, if I'm making a left turn onto a road, the person I turn in front of won't have to drastically slow down or stop as a result of my movement.
So, again, your comment is, is your analysis looked at, we haven't had accidents, therefore by de facto observation, it's good enough?
Yes, and Brave was not proposing to make any changes to the intersection.
And that Brave was not proposing to make, and, and we're talking specifically about the intersection of...
I'm referring to the site access at Colorado Boulevard.
The site access, okay, but not Jefferson or Covington, correct? Well, that's...
Yes, I did review visibility and side distance at those intersections as well.
Okay. It, I mean...
The Fenton analysis was addressing at the site access, that's...
But plain and simple, Mr. Fenton said there's a berm, and it limits site distance. And your comment is that we haven't had accidents, so even if it was 10 feet, they're not changing the intersection, and because we've had no accidents, it's okay.
That's where I'm saying, yes, site distance requirements have been met. That's the review I...
By reality, not by number, or not necessarily by number?
Yes, because I, my review evaluated on stopping site distance.
Okay. I think for right now, I'm okay, go ahead to other folks.
And could I, that was also the same analysis provided by the firm that performed the traffic analysis, correct? In the, yes? Yeah, FHU, they're, the original traffic, because it has a section about safety, right? And is that, did they use the same method that you used, I believe?
Correct.
Yes, okay. Other questions?
Yes, it's not a question, but I guess, listening to your answer to Rob's, Counselor Eber's, the fact that there haven't been any accidents there is determinative in terms of your analysis. I struggle with that because you know what the implication is. As soon as it becomes an accident, all bets are off. Do you want to leave it like that, or do you want to say anything about that? Because that's what I infer when I heard that statement, and it doesn't sound very good to me.
Yes, so one metric that's used by traffic engineers is crash data and crash history. So we evaluate if there's been a certain frequency of crashes at a location to indicate if an improvement is, is necessary or warranted. I admit that it's more of a reactionary metric than a proactive metric, and while...
But it's just one of many metrics.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Okay. Maybe we beneficial to discuss what some of those other metrics are?
And this is related to intersection safety?
Yes.
So other considerations of intersection safety are what is provided in the Brave analysis, which includes level of safety, a queuing analysis, crash analysis that we mentioned, site distance, geometric review to ensure that turning radii at the intersection meet minimum standards. Those are other examples of metrics that are considered when looking at intersection safety.
I wanted to just go back, you said though, that study looked at other factors as well, including site distance. But it sounds to me like there's just different site distance numbers in Brave's analysis than Mr. Fenton's analysis. I mean, why?
If you were designing a new road, you would design based off intersection site distance. You would want to make sure that vehicles have that amount of visibility to make their movements. We're evaluating an existing intersection, and so to evaluate the existing safety and site distance, those metrics are the stopping site distance versus the intersection site distance.
So we have the FHU traffic study, we have the traffic, the DB traffic study. The DB traffic study doesn't appear to address site distances at all. Am I, am I missing something there? The safety section of that study doesn't address any of that.
I'd have to take a quick look to confirm.
It's on page 10 of the DB study. It talks about queuing, and basically says the increase in queuing without adequate mitigation measures will cause issues, including the risk of rear-end collisions. And then it talks about pedestrian safety and emergency vehicles, and that's it. So we have basically two traffic studies and a review by our traffic engineer that don't indicate a problem with stopping distances.
Based on my review, I did not speak specifically to site distance when reviewing the DB analysis, so I don't believe, or I don't recall that they, it considered that in depth.
Other questions? Specifically about this part, because I know Director Wrigman, you still have more of your presentation, right?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
All right, so are we ready to move on from the traffic study? All right, thank you.
The third direction that we as staff received, again, was to make some of the changes to the development agreement that were provided by Counselor Holland at the meeting on the 19th, as well as coordinate with the applicant on additional changes based on what was heard at the meeting on the 19th. Again, Counselor Holland's amendments are provided in red. This first one is related to the recitals, and I believe it's the fifth whereas clause, again, applying the terms of the development agreement for church activities that occur on weekdays between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM. The next section of the agreement that has been amended, again, these are, these are in blue, so these are amendments that we as staff coordinated with the applicant beyond just what was directed or, or included at the proceedings on the 19th. This section of the agreement is updated to include language, excuse me, that Brave will minimize as much as possible the overlap of the start and release times with Kent Denver. Additionally, Brave will notify the city of these changes to the start or release times within 10 business days. We as staff during our negotiations between the 19th and now did push for letter B in this language, in this section, in order to ensure that Brave would make the necessary changes to their start time should that become necessary. The next section that was amended was section 1.2. This was the most heavily amended section. Certainly, the expectation is not that, counsel will read this, the details of it were provided in your packet ahead of time. I do want to highlight a couple of things related to the language. This section now gives the director or the designee of the director a license to enter the property to monitor the effectiveness of the circulation plan. It provides for either Brave or the director to propose changes to the circulation plan at any time, and the changes must be approved by the city prior to implementing those changes. And once either party receives notice to confer about those changes to the circulation plan, that conference must occur within five business days. And in addition, Brave agrees to make changes to the circulation plan under this section of the agreement. In this effort to improve the language in this section, staff pushed for the license to be able to enter the property to observe the site, the language that Brave would agree to make changes specified by the director, and to keep the language that the director may be required, may require Brave to submit additional traffic analysis, excuse me, as part of changes that are proposed by Brave. While that may result in Brave having to do more than one traffic study in a year, it was important for staff to have the ability to evaluate changes based on facts. And at this point, I would like to take a step back and just emphasize that it was important, as we went through these additional negotiations, to maintain flexibility with the circulation plan so that changes could be made at any time, and either party could propose those changes. The current circulation plan is based on the best information available today, but we as staff recognize that new information may require changes, and some of those changes may include those that have already been suggested or identified. Again, maintaining flexibility was key, and the current circulation plan is based on the best information available today. Section 1.5 of the agreement was also modified. It was modified to create clarity when the updated traffic analysis was due to the city, specifically when 30, within 30 days of enrollment reaching 150 students. Brave Academy agrees to make the changes approved by the director. This section also has new language that was important for staff to add that explicitly acknowledges that Brave may perform new traffic study prior to reaching 150 students for the same evaluation process if there are unseen, unforeseen impacts from the Brave Section 1.7 of the agreement was also modified. The, the intent here was to clarify and create specific requirements for the enforcement of penalties for violating the circulation plan. Staff pushed for the additional specificity in enforcement, specifically the meeting, the requirement to have a meeting with Brave staff for any driver who violates the circulation plan, and open that dialogue, as well as have a more structured fee schedule, if you will, for those violations. Again, staff acknowledges there is traffic on Colorado Boulevard, and there is congestion, especially during the morning and afternoon during the school year. This condition does exist today, but there are things that the city can do and will do moving forward, as was presented in the previous presentation. There are certain physical improvements that could be done that need to be evaluated. There are improvements that have already been made that we are continuing to monitor and coordinate with Denver on related to light timing at Colorado and Hamden. And then there are some things that we can do nearly immediately, which is talk to schools about the school roundtable, getting existing traffic counts for certain intersections so we have a baseline knowledge moving forward. That would conclude the staff presentation on the three specific directions that we received. The recommended motion is on the screen in front of you, and we certainly are available for any additional questions that counsel may have.
Are there questions for staff about the development agreement changes? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion. Counselor Eber.
Question, point of order, just a question that, can we also ask questions at this point of the applicant as well? To help us clarify our understanding of certain things. And then, that's one question, and then...
Well, what, what clear, I would say the appropriate question would be to staff to help clarify.
Okay, my question is specifically that, as a result of the hearing that we had last time, Pastor was very supportive of the idea of being a good neighbor and working collaboratively to try and work through in any things. And specifically, at one point, I believe you mentioned, if you want me to change the school hours, we'll change the school hours. We don't want to overlap with Kent. And I believe Kent currently starts at 8:30, and their traffic, in order to get past all the problems that are on Colorado Boulevard, are on, their, their students frequently are on at 8 o'clock on Colorado Boulevard, which is the 15 minutes directly before Brave is asking us to approve, and, and in that half hour window between 7:45 and 8:15 when classes start. So my question is, is, or my, one more comment. I did not get to make more modification suggestions at the last meeting because I thought it was important to hear the contents of the hearing before asking for additional things to be negotiated. And therefore, Counselor Holland was able to provide his and get them out before that phase one or the hearing itself.
Seeing the pushy type that I am.
And I thought it was best to concern myself with the language of the development agreement that would reflect what the hearing contents were actually about, and therefore, I did not write suggestions at, immediately at that time. I asked counsel at that time for things that came as a result of the hearing to be included in the continuance. There was some discussion about it. I asked for a, I made a motion that was not seconded, and it is exactly this type of question that I am trying to follow up on of, we all agree that Colorado Boulevard is a mess, and if, as Pastor said, he's willing to move the school time start and finish, for that matter, I want to know whether or not they would consider that, and...
Isn't that in the changes to the, can you go back to the slide? Yeah, there was a whole slide about that.
Well, we, in the original thing, we didn't talk about having any motion about changing start times, so technically...
But it says here that they, they will make all reasonable efforts to establish start and release times.
Well, I'm asking right now whether or not they would be agreeing to start at 7:30. Because right now, we already know that there's a problem on Colorado Boulevard, so I'm just asking.
This development agreement was amended pursuant to counsel's direction and in conjunction with discussions with the applicant.
I understand that.
So...
I'm, I'm partly...
If counsel as a group wants to ask for further amendments, then it can choose to exercise the discretion to do so, if it, if, and at which point it can ask the applicant if it would accede to that request.
And I agree, and I think then, if you would like to request that of the other council members, a motion would be in order to ask them to consider that.
Okay.
I will entertain motions that, for changes that you'd like to make?
Maybe we just want to make sure that all questions for staff are handled first.
I'm sorry, what?
Make sure that all questions for staff, that...
Yes, I think we, I think we did that.
Well, the other question that I have for staff is, I want to make sure that in the modification, and I can't remember if it was section 1.2, I believe we inserted the word "and Colorado Boulevard" in the list of streets that, is it 1.2? Nope, it's not 1.2. And Mr., oh, right, 1.2B, we included Colorado Boulevard. One of the things that I was hoping to do at the last meeting was to add other... One of the things that I was hoping to do at the last meeting was to add other streets, being Mansfield and Albion in particular, but also Parkway. But I want to know whether or not in the discussions, there was any type of an indication that, I assume those streets were not included in your discussions with Brave, and that would be the second thing that I would like to know about, whether counsel go that route.
Again, those streets were not identified as part of the meeting on the 19th, so they were not discussed.
Okay. And all, and, and thank you for the clarification. Those are the types of things that I wanted to raise last meeting. I know it was 1 o'clock in the morning, but the expectation.
Not quite at that point, but.
The expectation was that we would all be able to, not just one counselor, be able to raise questions on the development agreement. And I'm very frustrated by the fact that because it was excluded then, I thought it would have been included in the development related to the outcome of the hearing tonight, and yet it's not.
Well, I think if there are changes, it is not too late to make changes to the development agreement. It is difficult to.
I understand that.
But if you, if there are changes you would like to propose, you absolutely have the opportunity to do that.
It's, and please, I appreciate that. Please understand the awkwardness of, I'm about to make a motion that says I want the school to start at 7:30 and go till 2:30. It's a very awkward development to even waste all of our time when the applicant hasn't even had an opportunity to weigh on as to whether, and that's why I asked whether I can ask the question to the applicant.
Yeah, to be clear, if counsel agrees with that motion, we would probably then need to confer with the applicant, right?
Correct.
The development agreement is a contract that's negotiated, so.
Correct.
But it does need to come from a counsel movement and not, we can't just have all seven people here negotiating.
I, I understand.
So if there are changes that you would like to suggest and make.
I would like to, I move that we amend suggested development, Section 1.2, where is it, about hours, sorry, 1.1, to have arrive on or before 7:45 a.m. and depart on or after 3 p.m. And in 1.2, sorry, 1.2B, to add Mansfield, Albion.
Let's take them, let's take them one at a time, if we could. Okay, so the first one is Section 1.1, which, for the benefit of the counsel, is in Packet Item 8A. It's page two of 12 of the development agreement. I don't know where that is on your iPad, but I'll give you.
125.
A minute to get there. 125, says Counsel Holland. And the, the motion is, sorry, Counsel Eber, would you repeat that, to change the start time.
Change the text, which says, on which day students arrive at or by 8:15. 8:15 shall be replaced by 7:45, and then, and depart on or after 3:30. The 3:30 shall be replaced by 3 p.m.
Okay, there's a motion to change the start and release times, 7:45 to 3 o'clock. Is there a second? Oh, sorry.
Can you give us the packet number, page number?
125.
125.
I have paper here, so you don't have to do that.
Yeah, I'll give you a minute to find, I know, this is where the paper comes in handy. Okay, there's been a motion to change the start time to 7:45, release time to 3 o'clock. Is there a second? I'm sorry, Counsel Eber, I don't hear a second. So there's not support for that motion. You had a second one?
Section 1.2, I move to amend Section B to add three streets, Mansfield, Albion, and Parkway, to the list that says Colorado Boulevard, Covington Drive, or East Jefferson Avenue.
Okay, so that should be on the next page, if you're on your iPads. Section 1.2B, and this is referring to, if Brave Academy proposes a change, after conferring, the director will determine if the proposed changes can be made with the director's administrative approval, or if the city council approval is required. The director, at the director's sole discretion, may require city council approval of any such proposed changes to the circulation plan if the director determines that there is good cause to believe that the proposed changes adversely impact Colorado Boulevard, Covington Drive, East Jefferson Avenue, and then the proposed amendment is Mansfield, Albion, and Parkway.
Or Parkway.
Or Parkway. That is the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, there's a motion, there's a second by Counsel Holland. We'll have discussion on the motion to amend the development agreement. Yeah, Counselor Will.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I think what I heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that there are standards that exist for traffic studies, and those standards were met. And I'm not feeling qualified that I'm in a position to start overriding industry standards. But, you know, correct me if I've misspoken, aside from my own personal qualification, which I'm reasonably competent to speak about.
No, sir, your understanding is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I guess a comment that I make, which, because this is a discussion, right?
Yes, this is discussion.
And I seconded your motion. I'm not quite certain, and I can see why Albion or Mansfield are in there, and I can see that, I think that that, I can understand that. I'm not certain why Parkway is in there.
It's my belief that what is going to happen as a result of the people who leave the Brave Academy, I think we heard testimony that 50% of them will go back to the north out of the site access, and 50% will go south. In the morning, 50% of, I think it was about 108 cars, is about 56 or 54 cars, excuse me, will go south. We don't know, but, and we also heard testimony that approximately 35% of the students will be coming from the south, not 50%. So there will be an additional 16% that will want to go back to the north. And the quickest way to get back to the north is by making a left turn on Mansfield and making a left turn onto Albion, again, causing traffic impacts to those two streets. If for some reason they don't make that left turn, the next available straightest left is Parkway, and that's why I included Parkway. You could say they're going to go all the way up to Dahlia if they're going to do that, but my belief again is the quickest way, the, the light at Dahlia, anecdotally, is a bad light as well, that's a very short cycle and only takes a few cars to get through, so they're going to look for cut-through ways, and Albion and Parkway were going to be the brunt of that cut-through. That was the generation of the three streets.
Can I ask counsel's input? So it says, director will determine if the changes can be made with his administrative approval, or if city council approval is required. What does that mean?
That means the director has the discretion to bring the requested change from Brave to counsel for approval.
I understand that. What is his administrative, I mean, he can bring it to counsel either way, is that correct?
Yes.
So, I'm not sure what this second clause then means. If at any time he can bring it to counsel either way.
Well, this is, if, if Brave requests a change.
Right.
Then the director will have the discretion to decide, is this something that needs to be brought to counsel's attention, and that would it have broader impact? Or that it's of a scale sufficient that he can approve it administratively? The idea here was to facilitate some level of nimbleness so as not to delay by process any changes that could be made quickly, easily, and effectively.
Right, but the next sentence says, may require counsel approval if he determines there's cause to believe. It doesn't say he must get it, so he's not required to do it under any of these conditions.
Well, I, I would know that.
Is that correct?
It's an option.
That language about administrative.
So we could put every single street in the city in that list, and he's still not required.
That is true.
So I, I got to tell you, I have a concern here because I don't think we, as counsel, should be negotiating contracts from the dais. I, this, I was frankly, Earl, I didn't like it at the last meeting, and I don't like it at this meeting. I think we all got these agreements before the last council meeting, and that was the appropriate time to raise concerns that we had to the staff. And I think that all this does is delay because we now won't be able to make a decision tonight, one way or the other, because we have to go back and confer. We can't unilaterally, I guess we could, in theory, say, we're not going to do it unless this gets put in. But I, I think this is not the appropriate way for us as counsel be doing business. These are the types of things that we delegate to the staff, and we give our input when they provide these documents to us. So that, I'm just giving my opinion there.
Well, and, and in general, I agree with you, Counsel Maguire, but not as a blanket statement. From time to time, counsel is going to be up here, and we're going to sit back and go, hey, if you want this thing approved, you're going to add this condition. And I don't ever want to give that up, and so as a blanket statement.
I hear that.
Which I know you're not doing that, but I just want to make sure, because again, you know, my thing is, I don't like statements floating over the landscape because they take on a life of their own, so.
I, I agree, absolutely, I'm not saying it's a blanket. But, but certainly there are appropriate exceptions when new information comes up, but there's no new information coming up here.
Well, I respectfully disagree, Counsel Maguire, from the standpoint that this information came out as a result of the hearing. This was not information that necessarily was known beforehand, because it was only at the hearing that we heard that 50% of the traffic's going to go south. That was new information. So yes, it does say that the traffic will exit on the Colorado Boulevard, but we don't know numbers until we spoke with Pastor about that, and, and I believe, I can't remember if it was Pastor or if it was your consultant, who specifically said, we expect 35% of the students to come from the south and to go back from the south, and that was unknown before the hearing. And so I, I, I also hate negotiating from the dais, but given that I tried before, and it was information that came up that night, I'm trying again tonight to ask whether or not these are acceptable. These are things that I think would be very helpful for the people to understand, then as part of what they're getting at 1.2, is the, we're not perfectly happy right now, but hang with us because we've got lots of opportunity under 1.2 to work with the church in the future, that I want the neighborhood, besides just Covington, to understand that they aren't out there in the cold.
I think that's a fair concern. I, I want to go back, though, to the point that Counselor Maguire just raised, which is a very interesting point, that the first sentence of Section B reads, after conferring, the director will determine if the proposed changes can be made with the director's administrative approval, or if city council approval is required, period. So it doesn't matter, the director could say that city council approval is required because the sky is blue. It doesn't, it doesn't matter. So then it just goes on to say that the director may require city council approval if there's good cause to believe that the proposed changes to these streets, but they already have the authority to require city council approval, so that sentence really doesn't do anything.
No, I agree, I agree. It's, it's a bit of a never-know mind, and the point was, when I added Colorado Boulevard in there, I mean, and again, last.
Open a can of worms, Earl.
Well, I know, but I mean, the point is, I thought, that's got to be just, just something that was forgotten. It was basically saying, hey, we're going to look at this area here, to a large degree, even though, and as Counsel Maguire pointed out, and you pointed out, Mayor, they can do this anyway. It was just basically to put in there and go, this is what we're going to look at. And to that end, and that's why I asked you about Parkway, because in my view, and it's always been my view about this, anything that happens in that area is Colorado Boulevard, Mansfield, Albion, and East Jefferson. That's, I've always considered that. That, that will, I'll always be looking at that, at the end of the day, because we know through our history that Mansfield is a conduit for traffic that comes down that area. So in that regard, that's why I say, hey, Parkway, I've actually never heard Parkway come up. It doesn't mean that it hasn't, or that it shouldn't, but Albion and Mansfield come up all the time, and in fact, if I hadn't been going so fast last week or last time, I probably would have thrown those in there too, and those changes, and there, my bet is, is they probably would have gotten in. Maybe not, but my guess is they probably would have.
Mayor, if I could just, let me just provide a little context for just a moment, because I think, I want to make sure everybody understands, there is, some of these changes are vesting a lot of authority outside of city council and on to staff. This is a responsibility that staff does not take lightly, and, Mayor, you are 100% correct, the first sentence carries the day, but the second sentence is an attempt to demonstrate staff's sensitivity to council authority, especially when the conditions or the proposal gets made that is one that we think actually makes it worse, not better. So what we're trying to say is, if we think this makes things better and improves traffic congestion on Colorado Boulevard, we ask you to give us the authority to approve that quickly. Conversely, though, we, we recognize that that's an authority we take very seriously, and if we think that Brave is making a proposal that makes things worse, maybe it's good for Brave but bad for Colorado, or Mansfield, or wherever, we want you to understand, we, we defer to counsel's authority. That's really what we are trying to do. We weren't trying to confuse it more. We want to be deferential to counsel's authority while at the same time being nimble in an effort to approve positive changes.
Thank you for that. So I think we've had some discussion. There is a motion on the table to amend Section 1.2B to include the streets Mansfield, Albion, and Parkway. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Is there any desire, Counsel Holland, to make any amendment to the amendment?
Well, I suggested, Counsel Eber, you might want to. I am willing to yield on Parkway.
Okay.
Mayor, at this time, can we ask questions? We obviously are negotiating this development agreement from the dais, which we don't want to do. Can we get some input from the applicant, see if that makes any difference?
Unfortunately, I really don't think that would be appropriate.
I think what's going to happen is, if the motion goes forward and is passed, the next thing I'm going to do is, I'm going to move to adjourn, or to recess for a few minutes and.
That's right.
See if we can have a resolution on this, and if it is acceded to or not acceded to.
That was my point, I want to make sure that.
Yeah.
We'll find out pretty quick.
And procedurally speaking, there's a motion and a second.
Yes.
So that needs to be voted on. If it's voted down, and there's a new motion that's made that's slightly different, that would be the way to march through this.
Okay.
Right.
Yes.
So we need to, we need to move, we need to act, vote on that motion, and if that one were to fail because there were three in there in that initial motion, and now discussion's back down to two streets.
Yes.
We would then take up that new motion.
So, that is where we are, so.
He can amend his own motion?
We'll just do it this way for the.
This is for clarity of the record, Counsel Holland, and parliamentary procedure.
So, I will call the vote on the amendment to change Section 1.2B to include three additional streets, Mansfield, Parkway, and Albion. And I believe that's a voice vote, correct, Clerk? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
That fails. Is there another motion?
Same motion with the excision of Parkway.
So now there, there's a motion and a second to amend Section 1.2B to include Mansfield and Albion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. Oh, wait, there's one nay, thank you. Okay.
Are we going to?
Well, let me just ask, is there anything? Well, let me just ask, is there anything else?
Good question.
Okay, then, hearing none, we will take a five-minute, can we just recess? We'll take a five-minute recess? Ten-minute recess? Ten-minute recess.
Sorry.
Be back at eight, a nine-minute recess, be back at 8:00.
Why can't we just pass this thing with a stipulation that that goes in? What are we gonna do?
Well, it's, if we have to call this thing up-
Okay.
But I'm glad you're here, you're one guy that's saying-
I'm gonna use the second.
Laura.
Is he on?
Yeah.
Okay, let's, Counselor, Counselor Blum, Counselor Eber.
Yeah.
Laura.
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 All right, we are back from recess.
Laura.
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 We have just passed an amendment to the development agreement, and I'd like to ask-
Laura.
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 Proposed.
Laura.
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 We have proposed an amendment to the development agreement, correct? Thank you. And I'd like to ask staff to comment on that, please.
Madam Mayor, we would like to invite the applicant up to gauge their interest in the said motion.
Okay, thank you. And this will be for staff to discuss with the applicant. Thank you.
Correct. Just for the record, would you mind to identify yourself and your address?
Yeah. So, I'm Ty Ragsdale. I'm the applicant for 3651 South Colorado, applying on behalf of Brave Academy.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. As you've heard, there's been a motion and a second and a vote. Do you have opposition or hesitation to adding Mansfield and Albion to Section 1.2 of the development agreement, specifically Letter B, to include those streets to Colorado Boulevard, Covington Drive, or East Jefferson Avenue?
No, sir. That's totally fine by our side.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
I'll just add on there, so, and you're authorized to make those representations that, for your organization, that they're binding on your organization?
Yes, 100%. All the documentations in that shows that they released all authority on this application to me in this ad, since I'm not the owner of the property.
Thank you. And although your legal counsel is here, not here tonight, you're well apprised and advised of that, and are still willing to consent to this-
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. Okay, so, we have an approved, I guess I would call that now, amendment to the development agreement. Is there, I think the next step would be a motion to entertain the, regarding the development, or the application itself. So, if we can get back to the, there we go. I'd entertain a motion. And there will be an opportunity for discussion of the motion, so.
I move to approve subject to two conditions, Resolution 25, Series 204, a-
2024, I think.
Yeah, 2024. A resolution approving a site plan amendment to increase enrollment at Brave Academy to a maximum of 208 students in grades kindergarten through 12th grade at 3651 South Colorado Boulevard. The two conditions, first one is, the development agreement must be executed within 30 calendar days of approval of the site plan amendment by the city council. Second condition, within 30 days of the date upon which Brave Academy's student enrollment reaches 150 students, Brave Academy shall perform an updated traffic analysis to understand the traffic-related impacts, if any, based on its operation as set forth in the development agreement.
Second. Oh, there's a motion and a second. Counselor McGuire had her microphone on, so we're gonna give it to her. A motion and a second. I'll now entertain discussion. Any comments?
I've got some comments.
Well, okay, Counselor Holen.
I actually hope some of our folks would've still been here, but as I suspected, they're out. I understand that our residents are concerned about traffic. I said the last time, we have a traffic problem. But the current issue, our current traffic problem, isn't of Brave's making, although it will contribute to it, but it is not of their making. And as such, and based on all of the studies and requirements that Brave has met, and we appreciate them meeting those requirements, as well as their accommodations in the agreement, they're entitled to operate their school. I'm happy that Brave recognizes the concerns of our residents, who are their fellow neighbors, and have agreed to several changes in that agreement that are gonna help to mitigate traffic issues, and ensure that if traffic issues end up getting worse as a result of the school, there is a required process in place to address this. And as a result of that, I'm going to be voting in favor of approving this, this development agreement. But that said, and separate and apart, we hear loud and clear the concerns of our residents. There is not a lack of sympathy, as was stated tonight. And speaking for myself, I do know what's going on, okay? I live on Vista Road, and when I forget, at about 8:30 in the morning, that I have a meeting, and I need to go east on Quincy, I'm screwed. The people won't even let me make that left onto Quincy because of the Kent-Denver traffic and back it up. And in a half an hour, it's gone. As I said the last time as well, we need to address this. It doesn't matter that we may or may not find solutions. I'm gonna be asking, along with other council members, I'm sure, to saying, "Staff, we need to address the traffic issue out and around from Brave." But at the same time, and as I said last time, I don't expect there's gonna be a solution because traffic in Cherry Hills has always been a 55-45 issue. We heard it the last time. Some people want traffic calming, i.e., they like the traffic. Others want the flow. I'm absolutely convinced we can solve that traffic issue, just like we can solve on our crime issues when people are like, "Well, we don't want any crime in our city." And I said, "We can make sure you can leave your cars open and your doors unlocked, and you won't, and there won't ever be any crime. Your taxes will double. We'll increase the police force from 27 to 54, but we can solve it." Now, does that make sense? I absolutely believe we could fix this traffic problem. I don't know that we're gonna wanna spend that money, and I'm absolutely certain that there will be a rise-up with regard to a change in the character in terms of the changes that would fix that. There are fixes. The city's not gonna like them. Now, does that mean that there might not be incremental things that can be done to improve? Absolutely, and we need to look at those. And we need to look at the broader ones, too. I mean, just because I don't think the city would ever approve a broad-based change, doesn't mean that they won't. But man, in my 27, 28 years in this village, I ain't seen it, not when it comes to traffic. A 90-10 solution? That's easy. If that was there, we'd have done it by now. But you're not gonna find that. And that's, I'm not being negative to saying, "Hey, it's half-hearted." I really believe that we have an obligation. We've heard from our residents, and we need to tell our staff and direct them to investigate and look at trying to deal with our traffic issues. But as it relates to Brave, that's a separate issue at the end of the day. And that's why I'll be voting to approve this particular development agreement, and counting on not only the monitor that's in the development agreement, but also the city's right to monitor and have people on there. And in particular, 'cause one of my concerns is the exit coming out from, onto Colorado, there's a stop sign before the trail, and then there's a space after, and the way it's supposed to work is, you stop before the trail, then you sneak on out into the road, and you're not blocking. But I've got concerns that that trail's gonna continue to be blocked, and it shouldn't be. I think the term, I think the technical term I heard actually today was, "It's supposed to not work that way." Supposed to. I do think that's something that needs to be looked at. I hope you guys will be looking at that, because again, that, having cars blocking that trail, I think is gonna cause, cause an issue, and we gotta make sure that that doesn't happen. But other than that, I'm gonna be voting in favor, and I hope that our residents know that we will take the traffic issue seriously, and we'll look to see what we can do about it.
Counselor Eber.
I rise in opposition to the motion, after an awful lot of thought. It is not that I don't think that Brave is honest and caring for the community.
Okay, that's Counselor Blum, Counselor Eber. All right, we are back from recess. We have just passed an amendment to the development agreement and I'd like to ask...
Proposed.
We have proposed an amendment to the development agreement, correct? Thank you. And I'd like to ask staff to comment on that, please.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, we would like to invite the applicant up to gauge their interest in the said motion.
Okay, thank you. And this will be for staff to discuss with the applicant, thank you.
Correct. Just for the record, would you mind to identify yourself and your address?
Yeah. So I'm Ty Ragsdale. I'm the applicant for 3651 South Colorado, applying on behalf of Brave Academy.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. As you've heard, there's been a motion and a second and a vote. Do you have opposition or hesitation to adding Mansfield and Albion to Section 1.2 of the development agreement, specifically Letter B, to include those streets to Colorado Boulevard, Covington Drive, or East Jefferson Avenue?
No, sir. That's totally fine by our side.
Thank you for that, appreciate it.
I'll just add on there. So, and you're authorized to make those representations that, for your organization, that they're binding on your organization?
Yes, 100%. All the documentations in that shows that they released all authority on this application to me in this ad, since I'm not the owner of the property.
Thank you. And although your legal counsel is here, not here tonight, you're well apprised and advised of that and are still willing to consent to this.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. Okay, so, we have an approved, I guess I would call that now, amendment to the development agreement. Is there, I think the next step would be a motion to entertain the, regarding the development or the application itself. So if we can get back to the, there we go. I'd entertain a motion. And there will be an opportunity for discussion of the motion, so.
I move to approve subject to two conditions, Resolution 25 Series 204, a...
2024, I think, yeah.
Yeah, 2024. A resolution approving a site plan amendment to increase enrollment at Brave Academy to a maximum of 208 students in grades kindergarten through 12th grade at 3651 South Colorado Boulevard. The two conditions, first one is, the development agreement must be executed within 30 calendar days of approval of the site plan amendment by the city council. Second condition, within 30 days of the date upon which Brave Academy's student enrollment reaches 150 students, Brave Academy shall perform an updated traffic analysis to understand the traffic-related impacts, if any, based on its operation as set forth in the development agreement.
Second. Oh, there's a motion and a second. Counselor McGuire had her microphone on, so we're going to give it to her. A motion and a second. I'll now entertain discussion. Any comments? Well, okay, Counselor, hold on.
I actually hope some of our folks would have still been here, but as I suspected, they're out. I understand that our residents are concerned about traffic. I said the last time, we have a traffic problem. But the current issue, our current traffic problem, isn't of Brave's making, although it will contribute to it, but it is not of their making. And as such, and based on all of the studies and requirements that Brave has met, and we appreciate them meeting those requirements, as well as their accommodations in the agreement, they're entitled to operate their school. I'm happy that Brave recognizes the concerns of our residents, who are their fellow neighbors, and have agreed to several changes in that agreement that are going to help to mitigate traffic issues and ensure that if traffic issues end up getting worse as a result of the school, there is a required process in place to address this. And as a result of that, I'm going to be voting in favor of approving this development agreement. But that said, and separate and apart, we hear loud and clear the concerns of our residents. There is not a lack of sympathy, as was stated tonight. And speaking for myself, I do know what's going on, okay? I live on Vista Road. And when I forget, at about 8:30 in the morning, that I have a meeting and I need to go east on Quincy, I'm screwed. People won't even let me make that left onto Quincy because of the Kent-Denver traffic and back it up. And in a half an hour, it's gone. As I said the last time as well, we need to address this. It doesn't matter that we may or may not find solutions. I'm going to be asking, along with other council members, I'm sure, to saying, "Staff, we need to address the traffic issue out and around from Brave." But at the same time, and as I said last time, I don't expect there's going to be a solution, because traffic in Cherry Hills has always been a 55-45 issue. We heard it the last time. Some people want traffic calming, i.e. they like the traffic. Others want the flow. I'm absolutely convinced we can solve that traffic issue, just like we can solve on our crime issues, when people are like, "Well, we don't want any crime in our city." And I said, "We can make sure you can leave your cars open and your doors unlocked, and you won't, and there won't ever be any crime. Your taxes will double. We'll increase the police force from 27 to 54, but we can solve it." Now, does that make sense? I absolutely believe we could fix this traffic problem. I don't know that we're going to want to spend that money, and I'm absolutely certain that there will be a rise up with regard to a change in the character in terms of the changes that would fix that. There are fixes. The city's not going to like them. Now, does that mean that there might not be incremental things that can be done to improve? Absolutely, and we need to look at those. And we need to look at the broader ones, too. I mean, just because I don't think the city would ever approve a broad-based change, doesn't mean that they won't. But man, in my 27, 28 years in this village, I ain't seen it, not when it comes to traffic. A 90-10 solution? That's easy. If that was there, we'd have done it by now. But you're not going to find that. And that's, I'm not being negative to saying, "Hey, it's half-hearted." I really believe that we have an obligation, we've heard from our residents, and we need to tell our staff and direct them to investigate and look at trying to deal with our traffic issues. But as it relates to Brave, that's a separate issue at the end of the day. And that's why I'll be voting to approve this particular development agreement and counting on not only the monitor that's in the development agreement, but also the city's right to monitor and have people on there. And in particular, because one of my concerns is the exit coming out from, onto Colorado, there's a stop sign before the trail, and then there's a space after, and the way it's supposed to work is you stop before the trail, then you sneak on out into the road, and you're not blocking. But I've got concerns that that trail's going to continue to be blocked, and it shouldn't be. I think the term, I think the technical term I heard actually today was, "It's supposed to not work that way." Supposed to. I do think that's something that needs to be looked at. I hope you guys will be looking at that, because again, that, having cars blocking that trail, I think is going to cause, cause an issue, and we've got to make sure that that doesn't happen. But other than that, I'm going to be voting in favor, and I hope that our residents know that we will take the traffic issue seriously and will look to see what we can do about it.
Counselor Eber.
Thank you, Mayor. I rise in opposition to the motion. After an awful lot of thought. It is not that I don't think that Brave is honest and caring for the community. It is for a number of other reasons, of which, independent and not technically proficient in the specific area of traffic analysis and study, I rise and offer my perspectives that, in essence, Rob Eber calls into question the results of the traffic study. And it's only Rob Eber, and I want to make it very clear that I rise in my personal opinion of what this is. Let me get into it. Again, I welcome Brave to Cherry Hills Village. I'm your nearest city council member, probably. Earl would be a close second, depending on which way the crow flies, but nonetheless, I look forward to having a beneficial relationship, and frankly, one candid when it needs to be, or always can be, and pleasant, even when we disagree on things. So please, don't be hesitant to reach out to any of us on city council, but I'm happy to do that. I appreciate the submittal and the dialogue that you've had with the city. I especially appreciated your comments of wanting, as I mentioned earlier, to be a good neighbor and to fit into the community and try and be a good part of solutions. I want to also make very clear that I thank the many, many residents that came in and availed themselves of this process. We had people from five neighborhoods, four of which were from Cherry Hills. We even had somebody in the city of Denver who lives in the Cherry Point neighborhood east, but near Mansfield, who came in. We had nearly 80 public comments, nearly all of which were opposed on the traffic and safety concerns. And I think that would be the only ones, frankly, that I heard people talk about. You know, I heard testimony, and I believe it was the gentleman who, I think he was a retired CDOT engineer, and he might have been, was he the RK guy, or the R...
The DB.
DB, excuse me.
Yes.
But I found him credible from the standpoint of a guy who had done a ton of traffic analyses, a guy who didn't necessarily have an axe to grind, although he was hired by a neighborhood group. But I found him and his comment that the traffic analysis didn't meet standards. It weighed with me that it wasn't even a close call to him, and it made me wonder. And, you know, I want to add, the property is owned for this use. My brother started it in elementary school when it was a public elementary school there. You know, we have a long connection to what was then the Village Heights Elementary School. It has, you know, been an educational facility for a long time. It is within our area that we want for institutional purposes. We allow education there. I don't think anybody has a question that we welcome Brave to our community, we welcome Brave to conduct its school, we welcome Brave with open arms and wish the best for its success at what it is and fitting, again, in with the idea of being able to be a good part of our community. And I won't say, "You are a part of our community." Let's be very clear. You're not coming in and being treated as an outsider. You are part of our community, and we want to welcome you. And sometimes, community members slug it out between themselves, but it's always going to be with a good idea for the end. But it is clear, though, that times have changed a little bit since it was the Village Heights Elementary School. You know, as we've talked about a lot already, traffic has worsened a great amount. You know, development has gone up. There used to not be any Covington neighborhood, and now, what were one-story houses or two, and we've gone from a maximum height in our village code to now allow 36-foot houses in terms of height. You know, there's no question that Hampton is worse, and we have more cut-through traffic through Covington, and pretty much every neighborhood within the village. And we can thank traffic numbers, but we can also thank our dear friends at Waze. I would be remiss not to also mention that we have a new importance, but always not necessarily brand-new legal concern, that we on council are very, not concerned, aware of, understand, and want to be welcoming to what it means for our decision, and that is the, what's called RILUPA statute, Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. Passed in the late 90s, early 90s, I believe, but seemingly a very active statute in current times that we have to be cognizant of. You know, we have a nearly broken Colorado Boulevard in terms of functionality and numbers. The Conroy's were here earlier tonight. At age, I believe they're in their 80s somewhere, making left turns out of their property is not an easy thing to do, and many people all along Colorado Boulevard are badly impacted, not just Covington, not just what would possibly be the other streets that we added and mentioned. But, you know, I do think that the number of cars, and I'll talk a little bit more about this, I mean, I would say in general, Colorado Boulevard is a through-traffic street. Mansfield might be a through-traffic street. The difficulty, however, is that we have people who really do live on something that doubles as kind of a through-street. It isn't like Bellevue, or, University doesn't have all that many houses right on it, but it is one of the changes that we have to consider. And so, the other thing that I think a little bit about is, given that we have a problem with Colorado Boulevard and some other streets already, is I am very concerned about emergency vehicle access, particularly onto Colorado Boulevard during the peak times. There's just nowhere for any of the cars that are on Colorado Boulevard to go when a fire truck needs to go up Colorado Boulevard, unless they pull over to the ditch. And if the snow is there, they're probably not going to get out on their own. And notwithstanding that, it's just not the easiest thing to do to get cars off of Colorado Boulevard for emergency vehicles. Adding more vehicles will only make that much more difficult. Obviously, you've heard tonight, a little bit earlier, my frustration about kind of how matters kind of went as far as some amendments to the development agreement, and I'm glad we were able to work through some of those things. You know, specifically to the concept of the traffic study and the requirement that there's a finding that Brave does not unreasonably contribute to the traffic or safety issues, and I may not have the exact wording of the ordinance down, but that's the one that I am basing my opposition to the motion upon. And I appreciate the experts. I appreciate that I am an environmental lawyer who did an awful lot of litigation as well, but I am not a traffic lawyer nor a traffic consultant with the, but it, there were questions that I had, notwithstanding that, that to me made it difficult to pass the sniff test. We followed the Arepo County guidelines for doing this report because Cherry Hills Village doesn't have its own. You know, what I can tell, that document says that you study all of the intersections within a half a mile of the subject property. And we didn't do Hampton, and had we included Hampton, it would have materially, I think I asked the question of the consultants' last meeting, specifically what level of service between Hampton and Mansfield it would have received on those couple that didn't have designations on them? And I thought I heard that the answer was, they would have gotten an F. And, you know, if something's already an F, and we say that it, we get a traffic study that says it would only be a D during rush hour, it seems to be, something in my head goes off saying, "This doesn't make sense." We have the rationale for not including Hampton because of the HAM study, or HAM study, whatever, I don't know.
HAMs.
HAMs?
Hampton Area Mobility Study, yeah.
And, as the type of beer, that's right. Notwithstanding that, I think that it would have been an appropriate thing to include that in a comprehensive study. And similarly, it didn't include Mansfield because it wasn't, I think the testimony was that it wasn't considered to be a main street or a main intersection. And that, to me, either we follow everything within the half a mile that's in the book, or we don't follow what's in the book. And so, those were, those were heavy in my mind as to why I questioned the traffic analysis. You know, we did hire a traffic consultant because, thank God for Director Workman, he is many things and an expert in everything that I have found that he does, but he first and foremost will admit that he is not a traffic engineer, and so he was able to contract that out to Mr. Schneider. I believe, you know, I don't know this, but Mr. Schneider appears to be a Knottson resident, and I don't know how much you really get the vibe of Cherry Hills Village in terms to understand, and I think you probably looked at it in a very objective, "Does it fit in the box?" type of, and the criteria analysis. But the consideration of things like in the circulation plan of considering, you know, not using Covington versus using Covington Drive for that circulation is something that, not living here, I don't know how fully you would appreciate that, and that goes to sort of the aspect of the circulation plan. Overall, the biggest thing that I would say that is screwy to me is, there was one day of data collection in the springtime, and any book that says that you can do one day of data collection to get an effective travel, traffic analysis, to me, right there screams "Wrong." You should get a representative amount of data. And to me, that includes consideration of what will happen in the loop down and up just south of the church when it snows. As we heard testimony from the Conroy family again, it is backed up all the way through that dip and up to their house, and, you know, we heard lots of other testimony that specifically said that reality was far different than what the study said. And the reality, again, to me, is that Colorado Boulevard is a mess already, and adding more traffic to Colorado Boulevard is not a good recipe. And full of the, the last thing with, specifically with the study, was, I asked this question during the first part of the hearing to Brave's consultant about, between Covington, excuse me, between the site access point where they leave and Jefferson where they come in, I in essence said, "There seems to be double counting that isn't being," excuse me, "There is not double counting when there should be, based on the fact that the same 154 cars, of which at the ratio was about 108 cars, would be leaving in the morning, would in essence be on Colorado Boulevard twice. And on the southbound way, the same thing, the portion that goes south would be there only once. And then in the afternoon, the same thing happens, is people are coming to that piece between the site access, where everybody's leaving, and Jefferson Avenue where they're all coming in, that there's really not 105 cars coming in, there's really 210 car trips coming in on that, using that two-block stretch of Colorado Boulevard. In the morning, that stretch of Colorado Boulevard, that two-block stretch of Colorado Boulevard, I think our traffic study said it had an average number, or had, on the day of the, of the data analysis, about 200, high 200s. And we're adding 150 cars coming in, 100 going out, split them 50-50, I believe, on, let's just say you've got 54 more of them going north. So the northbound part of Colorado Boulevard, on those couple of blocks, is adding 200 cars, when right now there's 250 to 300 cars. It's almost 100% increase on those two blocks. How that's not an unreasonable addition based on numbers would astound me, before we worry about whether it slows anybody down. Similarly, on the southbound side, you've got, or, excuse me, the afternoon side, you've got 100 and, I believe it's 88 trips leaving. And let's again say 50% of them go to the north, 50% of them go to the south. You've got 90 additional cars on Colorado Boulevard at a time when Kent has just let out lots of afternoon and rush hour traffic, and I believe that our traffic count on that was in the mid-300s. So again, you've got an addition of 188 cars, split 50 and 50. You've got probably a 20 to 40% increase on traffic volume as a result of Brave Academy. I, I'm not a mathematician, there's a reason I didn't, that I became a lawyer, and it wasn't to do math, so all my numbers may be completely wrong, but I tried to do rounding. And that's where I came to, to find that it seems the Brave Academy program is adding a ton of traffic, to the point that it is fair to ask them to deal with their portion of the contribution of the problem under our city ordinances. And I'm not sure that we were asking our proportionate share out of the church. I'm not asking the church to solve it, but I'm asking it to do more than what it appears in this document that we are doing. The genesis of my change to the school time was frankly to, if, 8 to 8:30 is the time that Kent, and Kent, you know, my colleagues tell me, Kent is always changing its times, and who knows if they're going to change its time. So I was like, "Forget it. Let's just make this before anything Kent would ever do." That was the genesis of my proposal for a 7:45 start, is if it's really bad at 8 o'clock, it's less bad, excuse me, it's less bad earlier. Little kids, the studies say, do really well with early starts. Let's have the bulk of the class come early, and the older kids will get along. You mentioned, Pastor, that you have very good compliance with the directives of your community, and a few groggy eyes first thing in September will turn into wide awake students by October, would have been my hope. I think we reserve that option later on, when, as part of the overall discussions. The application is to go to 208 students, as I already mentioned. It's about 155 cars, 105 in the morning stay, and 180 leave in the afternoon. We already mentioned the idea of the testimony, 65-35 coming from the north and the south. And that was the genesis of my proposed amendment to include Albion and Mansfield, is I do think a large number of the students and/or parents that go to the south still look at what is the overall fastest way. And the overall fasted way, fastest way, will be to use a southbound exit. And the overall fasted way, fastest way will be to use a southbound exit out of Brave and then a quick left onto Mansfield, because there was a lot of discussion about what the impact would be on the intersection of Quincy and Colorado Boulevard, but frankly, I don't think that's where they're going. Unless they live on a place that needs to use that, that's such a disaster intersection already that they're not going to use it, and they're going to use Mansfield, and that impacts badly the people and communities that are off of Mansfield. The final piece that I was trying to understand and weigh in on is, to put it bluntly, I really dislike the circulation plan. Again, I want you to have a successful, safe utilization of the property. I'm not sure that the circulation plan, let me go further, I, I know right now that the circulation plan is not, in my personal opinion, the best way to have people leave that site. And I think there's a whole lot of work, and it may be a different plan in the morning from the one in the afternoon, but an example of that, and I appreciate the church's, Brave's willingness to listen to the community in Covington. When Covington told you they didn't want Covington to be used, you listened, and that's great. But Covington doesn't make traffic policy for the entire village, and I don't know if there were alternatives that really looked at Covington, notwithstanding Covington's desire not to. I think I tried to ask that question before, and I think I got an answer, is we didn't really look at it because Covington told us not to use Covington. And, you know, my belief is that the traffic coming from the south should get off of Colorado Boulevard and onto Brave property as fast as it can, and not go all the way up to Jefferson. So I would have brought people onto Covington and make a quick right into Brave, I would have run them in a counterclockwise position instead of, it goes right now, in a clockwise, I would have run it another way. But anyway, it's an alternative that would have reversed it and not made as much overlap to me, and it would have included the potential exit onto Hampton, because Brave has two exits on Hampton, and in the morning, the people who are staying are going to be those young drivers who may be lesser experienced, but the older people who are dropping kids off and driving can certainly make a right-hand turn onto Hampton safely, and should be able to. In the afternoon, Hampton is a busy place. But these are licensed drivers that are supposedly able to make it, and the question really comes down to, is it more dangerous to empty all these people onto Colorado Boulevard than it is to empty them all onto Hampton? And, you know, we'll do another traffic analysis when the time's right to figure that one out, but I really didn't like the traffic plan. And so as a result of that, I think we could have done better, you know, I, I appreciate the cooperativeness, again, I keep saying it because it's really that genuine that I appreciate. At the same time, this is my one time that I think I've got the most leverage to ask you all things that, once I approve of this, there's, certainly under the original language of the development agreement, there was sort of a one-shot time. And now, I'm very proud of the additional language in the inserts that were put in in 1.1 and 1.2, that give the city an awful lot of input onto future analyses, and in fact, it, it, the biggest change and the necessary change from my perspective was really that it allows the city to initiate and make calls for changes regardless, or as my friends in New Jersey say, regardless of anything that Brave Academy thinks is necessary or not. So, the long and the short of it is, though, I think this application today could and should be better, especially with respect to the circulation plan on the property, and the entrance and exit of the property. And because it's not, that's why I'm opposing it. But fear not, I'm going to be outvoted, and my prediction is, I'll be standing alone, and that doesn't bother me. But nonetheless, I mentioned, and I am very serious, that the agreement that we have now reached on the development agreement really gives me a lot of confidence that the path forward is a good path, to be able to say, we, we have a problem and we're committed to do something. Right now, I can tell you, I know that when we get to a certain number, it'll be bad. You know, maybe we all get really lucky and the city is able to convey to the Colorado Department of Transportation how important it is for us to actually be able to get in and out of our neighborhood in a fashion that is as important as moving people east and west on Hampton. God forbid that should ever happen. But then we wouldn't have traffic on Colorado Boulevard like we do now, and that would alleviate a lot of stuff. And hopefully, the city is able to make some meaningful advances on some of these traffic improvements, including, I think the fundamental one in my mind, is making C-DOT understand that more than a four-car processing through the Hampton light needs to happen, just flat out, needs to happen, that we have a right to get out of our neighborhood and into our neighborhood in a, in a, in a timely fashion, into our whole city. So fear not, from the standpoint that this will be passed, all those people who came in in opposition of it. There is a potentially bright path forward, or a bright path, not even potentially, there's a bright path, that if we all use it right, we can be comfortable with the idea that this passed tonight, even though I am not moving in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Wheel, or Mayor Potem Wheel?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I, I'll be voting in support of the, of the agreement. The reasons are kind of multifaceted, and I'll try to keep it simple. Traffic is a reality. I sit on the Denver Regional Council of Governments Board, and we look at data that says, you know, over the past 25 years, population has grown by hundreds and hundreds of thousands of people in the region. And Denver Regional Council of Government largely focused on transportation and building, transportation funding and issues. So, population has grown, number of lane miles has grown low single digits over that same period of time. So the, the area is becoming more and more and more congested, and that's just a, a part of the reality that we, we live with. I'm not deaf and insensitive to the residents and their concerns, I think they're very real. On the other hand, we're kind of bound, to some degree, by processes and codes, and I think those are good things. We, if you want to do a development agreement and traffic could be impacted, you have to do traffic studies, there's specifications for the traffic studies, there's specifications for the people that do them, have to be professional engineers and licensed by the state, and there's criteria about that, and you can go on and on and on. The whole purpose of these processes, and they're elaborate, I mean, you know, we each got over 500 pages of documentation on the council just on this topic, so they're elaborate. The, the purpose of that is so that we're consistent and we're diligent in our work, and, and that competent people are doing the work. And so I have to put some faith in that. Yeah, the traffic's not good, yeah, it's going to get worse. On the other hand, you know, there are criteria that say, you can't hold something up if it doesn't make it this much worse, change it to a grade F specifically. And that just hasn't happened. I think Brave has met the, the process requirements that are in front of us to make these sort of decisions, and in that sense, I, I don't know that I have a choice, you know, because the processes are in place for a good reason. I think at the same time, Brave has demonstrated a lot of goodwill and willingness to be flexible and be a good neighbor. And I think of this as kind of a self-correcting process, that is to say, it's not in Brave's interest to have a whole bunch of congestion and a lot of difficulty getting off of their property, just like it is for the residents. So in that sense, I think there's a, a basis for that goodwill and cooperation to continue on into the future, and that gives me confidence that we will make the best out of this situation. And that's, that's why I'm, I'm in support. So I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Sheldon?
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier tonight, Mayor Brown and City Attorney Guckenberger reiterated something that I said back in November, that we have to judge this application based on the criteria that's in front of us, and based on our consultants and our staff, our professional consultants. And I, I point out and put emphasis on the word professional, because this man sitting here to my left, Mr. Snyder, has a PE stamp, I assume, Professional Engineers stamp, this is livelihood, so he, he's not about to go out there and sign off on something that does not work, he puts his livelihood in jeopardy. If we can't rely on our staff or our professional consultants, we should fire them immediately, point blank. And I would say that to the next council who steps in here, if you ever feel that way, if, if our staff and consultants can't be relied on, they should be replaced. That all being said, I do recognize that there is a problem out there, and it's not just at this intersection or at this particular location, it's citywide, it's statewide, it's nationwide. As Councilmember Wheel was suggesting, traffic's getting worse everywhere. And back to what Counselor Holland said, do we want to solve the traffic? Because solving the traffic means more people will use the roads. We've seen it before, we did it eight years ago, and we had a big hoopla on the city about a roundabout, and we were told by the citizens, they did not want us to solve a traffic problem. They would rather have what we currently have than us go try to fix it by putting in a traffic control device to move things along faster, because that would encourage more people to cut through our city. There's no right, wrong answer. I mean, it's, it, I guess it is right or wrong, depending on where you live, but put yourself in somebody else's shoes who uses the city to get in and out of, or back and forth from, or, it, there's no right or wrong answer that fits everybody perfectly. In the end, I, I can't help but to come back to the criteria, and I am convinced that we have, that this application has met the criteria, therefore, I feel an obligation to approve, I will be voting yes on this application.
Thank you. Counselor Plumb?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank all the community who's come forward, and I think it's very, very important that they have shed a light on a traffic problem that we have within the city, notwithstanding Brave or anybody else. When I came on council eight years ago with a couple of my members here, we had a big traffic issue at Steel and Glenmore Drive, and just dealing with C-DOT took 10 years, a total, from the time we started, probably 18 years to get that thing solved. But I think what's important is that it's been pointed out to council, and for the incoming council, there's a major project that we can work on, the city can work on to address some of these issues. We may not have the solutions today, but I think we know basically what the issue is, and we go forward with it. I'm not a litigator like Counselor Eber, but as a tax attorney, I never took a course on traffic engineering. So concurring with Counselor Sheldon, we have to rely on their expertise, and I go back to times when I've worked as a real estate developer, we've always had to hire traffic engineers, we've always deferred to their judgment, because they're the professionals, like Dan said, that make the, the decision, advise us as to the consequences. As, as far as our development agreement, I think it's well drafted now. I think the important thing is that if you go forward above 208 students, then they've got to come in, the Brave Church would have to come in again for a, another site plan to, well, and, and there will be a study at 150, but if they go above 208, they have to come in with a new site development plan. There will be a public hearing, we'll have to get all the same input, and new traffic studies at that point in time. And we ask, I asked, and both Councilmen Sheldon asked at the last time, Mr. Snyder and Mr. Philman, and they've said clearly that there was, if I go back to the minutes, there was not unreasonable, nor was there a, creating a traffic safety hazard by approving this. As such, I will be voting yes on this. I do want to thank Director Workman for his work and expertise on this, and all the experts who had advised us on that. And again, just in summary, I'm going to rely on the experts and defer to their judgment, and there'll be a yes vote on my behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McGuire?
Thank you. First of all, I too want to thank Director Workman and, and city staff for all the time they've put into this, this has been a, a discussion and a decision that has required a lot of time and effort and patience, so I appreciate that. Our decision is, has Brave met the requirements of the site amendment? And clearly, traffic is the biggest issue. I find that the city's expert used reasonable standards, and that his testimony was credible. But I hear the concern of the people who live in the area, traffic is a real issue in the city, and I think we have several hotspots. Colorado and Hampton is a big one, Colorado and Quincy is a big one. I live on the west side of the city, I'm telling you, coming west on Quincy at University, when school's in session, you're lucky if you can get one light, or one car through on a left-hand turn, because we don't have a dedicated arrow there. So I would ask the staff to put, dealing with those three areas, on the agenda for the city planning session in February? In March? Okay? So, and, and that we make that a priority in, in terms of trying to find a solution for that. Finally, I encourage the applicant to continue to try and work closely with the neighbors in the city, I appreciate the flexibility that you've shown, and your willingness to continue to discuss things with us, and I, I will also be supporting approval of the site plan amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Given that all the council members have had their opportunity to provide their comments, I would ask the clerk to please call the, was it a voice vote? It's a voice vote, really? After all this? Seriously? Okay, well, all in favor?
Aye.
And if you'd like to say it twice, or, and any opposed?
Yes, nay.
And you can say it twice, too?
And as I said, I'm comfortable alone.
Yeah. That passes, thank you very much. I would also like to express my thanks to the applicant for all of the work and effort that you have put into it, and your willingness to be a partner with the city, to our city staff, I know you have worked very diligently, and we do have a very expert staff, I know that people don't always love what you have to say, but I appreciate that you say it with professionalism. And then, most of all, I would like to extend thanks, even though most of them aren't here, to the residents who show up. It is so important that people be involved and be engaged, and I would encourage you, not only at times like this, when there's something that touches you very personally, that obviously gets people out, but I would encourage you to be engaged... engaged throughout the year as well and to stay abreast of things that happen. I've been on council for a long time. There was a city traffic study, a whole citywide traffic study in 2016. We had public meetings. I personally, as the council representative for this area, have been involved in multiple meetings regarding Mansfield. And there absolutely are traffic issues, but I would reiterate what other counselors have said, that everyone agrees there's a problem, no one agrees on the solution. And so I want people to understand that while it may seem simple, the solution may seem simple and obvious to you. The more discussions we engage in, and I'm happy to have them again because times have changed, but the more conversations you engage in, you realize that what seems simple to you doesn't seem as simple to someone else. And so I think that Counselor Eber made a great point, that no one person or group of people gets to make traffic policy decisions for the city. And so while a lot of great ideas came out of the discussions here, those things have to be taken to a broader audience and have broader discussions in the community about whether there is support for those ideas moving forward. I think the roundabout is the perfect example of how that doesn't work. So that being said, thank you all very much. Brave Academy, best of luck to you and your future endeavors. And we will move on to item 8B, the Cherry Hills Land Preserve 2020. Oh, yeah, oh, wait, need a break.
We just got to rearrange for the rest of the meeting. We can make it three minutes.
Or I even wrote it on my agenda, and I still was gonna...
It could be super short, we just got to do a quick rearrange.
Yeah, we'll take a three-minute recess.
Thank you.
I don't know.
I think they're gonna bring some goats in.
I'm gonna take advantage of it.
Me, too.
Is this the part where they bring the goats in?
Wait, I am. I am.
Who's your next?
Can I sit here?
Okay.
Okay.
I'm kidding, you did.
I'm pretty honest with you.
How long we go speed?
How long we go speed?
Have you guys been close to mine?
Yes.
Yeah.
We said a lot of things.
Well, I'm pretty sure.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Did you guys get close to mine?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
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 Really has doubled. Um, we just more emails, more signage, more posters, more um, social media now, which is a new thing of uh as of this year. And then in terms of programs, uh, we went from eighteen to twenty-four. We had a lot of them in June. And and throughout the summer, um, some for adults, some for families. Um, and it's been great. The last two years I've experimented and now I kind of know what types of programs people in this community really want to come to and support. And our program attendance went from eight hundred and ten in last year in twenty twenty-three to um thirteen hundred and forty-eight this year. We did get a little bump for the two open houses in end of October, November from the ballot initiative. But I have to say before that, um, that had nothing to do with, you know, with it just getting people to come to the farm um was uh was our our major um goal. Uh, we added seven new ambassadors and I'm very excited because it's very strategic who we got. Um, number one, a demographic that is different, so um younger with uh school-aged children was my goal. And so we we got several um who fit that criteria. And then uh geographically speaking, we also extended into uh the northeast quadrant of the village where we had very little coverage before. It was all in Old Cherry Hills. And so that's made a huge difference in so many different areas. Uh, just how I get the word out about an event, who comes to the events, who supports us. And um that's just the seven was from this year. I plan to get five or seven more next year. And they really are the heart and soul of this organization. And so the board helps. Uh, but the ambassadors really, really help me as the executive director. And uh, once you get them engaged, they bring all their friends and it's just really exciting to see. We hosted a barn party at the Village Club this year. And um while the guests, the number of guests was a little lower um than the previous year. I think it was because it was at the Village Club and not at Quincy Farm. Um, the mix was different and I got a lot of positive feedback. Um, uh, a younger demographic and um was added, so it was a perfect mix. Katie, you were there and uh people really had a great time. And our goal, you know, I I was at the beginning of the barn party era and volunteered all the time and I couldn't wait to go. Um, and that's what I'm trying to generate now with newer residents, younger residents with kids. Get them so excited to be involved in something where they see all their neighbors. Um, and then finally, probably our biggest accomplishment of this year is well, we presented the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars la in Novem- um, the October uh meeting. And uh, I'm happy to say and proud to say that we now have the full hundred and fifty thousand um uh pledged. So yay! Um, and it I have to say, in spite of a crazy summer with chaos and so much confusion, um, I got so many calls about so many, I it was insane. I am really proud of our group led by uh Judith, uh, our development chair, um, to be able to get to the hundred and fifty thousand. Um, the mechanics are we will give a check for a hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred um in a week. I know I had said December third, Dan, I think you had brought that up. Um, but we have a little DocuSign situation with someone who's in Argentina. Um, so once she's back. When she's back, um, we will have that first check. And then we will be presenting the remainder, the twenty-five thousand at the January, um, the early January meeting for approval from you. And we'll have a couple more payouts, uh, one in January, one in March and but you'll see that in Jan- um, January. So we're very excited. That was a really big deal for us. Our our, we did the feasibility study in twenty twenty-three. Um, this in twenty twenty-four and it's kind of spilling out into twenty twenty-five. We will be working, spending our own money on things related to the barn, interior decor, if we need a uh farm table, chairs, some of the memorabilia we want to frame. So that's what we'll be working on going forward.
Quick question for you, Emily. Looking at the budget, uh, there's two different numbers. Pond dredging, you've got two twenty-one. And at the bottom it says the grant is two forty-one.
The two twenty-one is a typo that I did not catch. The two forty-one eighty-four is the correct number.
Okay.
Um, so popping into the major projects that we have planned in the twenty twenty-five annual plan. Um, council saw all of these at the September seventeenth study session, so none of these have changed. Uh, the big barn will continue into next year. We'll also be doing a feasibility study on the farmhouse on the east side that's pictured at the bottom. Um, to, since that's really going to be the support building for the barn. Uh, we will be doing cost estimating for the Hopkins House to see what it would take to get the first floor of that structure accessible, um, and an accessible restroom in there as well. And then replacing the footbridge across the high line and dredging the pond and replanting to improve the habitat there.
Um, our number one goal next year is everything is um revolves around celebrating the new and renovated barn. Um, we will start with a donor appreciation event. We'll have some um ribbon cutting. Uh, we will do um a big grand reopening for the public in June. So we have a lot of really exciting things planned. And uh, we just want to make sure that we have um the plaques up right for the donors, one thing. And some of that memorabilia and the saddles and all the beautiful ribbons and all that. So um, we're very excited uh to have that happen and and we think um, I'm thinking my job may be a little easier this year, getting people to come. Um, because it'll be all about come see, take a look. Uh, so we're going to have some signature series. I've figured out what works. And um, you know, art for kids and adults, the gardening and flower arranging. And then speaker events on sustainability. Rob, you had brought that up la, I don't know, a year ago. Um, you know, on a a a lot of topics related to nature, sustainability, conservation. And we will have now an interior space um in the barn to actually be able to do this. When Harriet came, um, I don't know if anyone came to that, um, we had a, she had the projector up there and it was like we were in an airplane. And everyone's like, hello down there. And we were coming out the edge over here or, you know, the front door. So next year, it's just going to be great to have all these events. Um, uh, increase social media and ambassador outreach and that just um nothing, nothing new there. Just keep doing what we're doing. And then building partnerships with, we had the Butterfly Pavilion this year and we continue to do things with Denver Audubon. I'm trying to get um the Botanic Garden, some connections there. So uh, we're really excited about this year coming up. It's going to be amazing. And so many people are going to have such great experiences um at the at the farm with the big barn.
Um, so the proposed budget for next year is included in the plan as attachment A. Um, this is the city's budget. Um, it is important to note that a significant amount of this is um for projects being continued forward this year, the barn, the pond, um, and the footbridge replacement. So those costs will be offset by our Arapaho County grant and CHLP's contributions uh towards that big barn project. And alongside the capital projects, we have about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in here for maintenance and an additional twenty thousand for the utilities.
So Emily, I'm sorry, go back to that page.
Yes.
Um, so when you say a million thirty-six thousand carried forward, that's the?
There is a rather complicated um calculation behind that in that we increased the barn budget at the last meeting. So some of that is in there, some of that is not. And the bridge replacement, this year we had budgeted seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, we put out an RFQ this year to find out more accurate costs for that bridge. So we've increased that budget for twenty twenty-five to ninety-five thousand dollars. So it's not a one-to-one match if you add up the capital projects um to get to that number.
So so just as I understand, so that's funds that we allocated last year that are going to get spent this year? No?
Well, they're re, you're reappro- you're re-appropriating them again. Yeah.
I'm sorry. Right, my bad. I'm already thinking next year. They were allocated this year. They aren't going to get spent this year. They'll get spent next year. Okay? In my head, I'm already in twenty twenty.
But okay, so wait, I but I want to, I want to keep going on that. So in twenty twenty-five, we're budgeting to spend one point three million?
Yes.
Um, let's round up. Four hundred of that is going to come out of grants.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're down to nine hundred thousand or so, plus or minus? And we're carrying forward a million plus. So we're not spending any new money?
Yeah, this is why I get confused. The CHLP donation really is a twenty twenty-four donation, not a twenty twenty-five.
It's being delivered to the city partially in twenty twenty-four and partially in twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Got it. But the pond money is only coming in twenty-five?
Yes, that's correct. It's reimbursing.
No, that I'm ju- that's good. I I'm I'm sorry, if I, the way I'm saying that doesn't make it sound the way I'm, like, that's good.
Look on your face didn't make it sound good.
I don't think spending a million plus on Quincy Farm every year is um sustainable and maybe uh we would need to have a a deeper conversation about that. I think this is great that um we're making a lot of progress for what I consider to be a pretty reasonable amount of money over an extended period of time.
Although not to, not to put a damper on your enthusiasm there, but you know, if you are looking at the long-range financial plan, you'll see some big numbers in there for Quincy Farms over the next three years.
Oh, no, I know.
So there is a lot in there.
Yes.
Year in, year in, year in, year out. It's not been approved. It's just in the long-range financial plan.
We, yes.
We did also include in this year's annual plan, um, the last attachment to the annual plan is potential grants for future projects that we're looking at, state historic fund, GOCO, future Arapaho County grants. So we are very mindful as a team that um we don't have any intention of this type of spending being routine by any means. Um, and looking at ways to offset future, especially building rehabilitation costs.
Yeah.
And I I do want to just, in defense of Emily, um, I I got my hands in this particular table and it probably didn't help. I was attempting to show.
You can see it right there.
Yeah, on the bottom. I just wanted to highlight, not necessarily have it add up, and I think that's maybe where I messed it up. I just wanted to show all the other outside contributions to the mayor's point. It's really all I was trying to show. So I wasn't trying to make it seem like a financial instrument or document of some kind that was attempting to all perfectly tie all the loose ends. I just wanted to show, look at all the outside money that's coming in.
Absolutely.
Um, in in the MOU, it says a budget that we're supposed to see a budget that specifies the amount of funds to be contributed by CHLP towards the plan. Is the hundred and fifty thousand that you committed to donate this year?
Mm-hmm.
Is that all that's being, there's not going to be anything else next year? How much is CHLP bringing?
Um, that's correct. We um, the one fifty is bleeding into next year for us as we collect it from our donors. We're also spending money on the interior. Um, we have budget for that, but um we.
Do you have that for us to look at?
No.
Okay. I mean, I I, I'm expecting to see a budget of what the city's spending and a budget of what the land preserve is spending. I think that's what this means in the MOU. Um.
Our operating budget or what we're contributing to site improvements?
Funds to be contributed by CHLP towards the plan. So that would say to me what CHLP is spending in pursuit of the annual plan for next year. So we're spending this much on programming. We're spending this much on decorating.
And we have our nine ninety for that and that is all um available and I can pass that along.
I think that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree. And I do think the programming is part of that because the programming is.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. But I think you're right, Councilwoman.
Your time's bound, sure.
Here's.
But but so are you telling us that there are not um that land preserve is not expecting to raise any more funds outside of programming?
Well, that's a big number for us. I mean, last year, I think we, I don't know, spent a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, programming, it's not just programming. It's all the outreach really is the big um number there. So um.
I think that, yeah, if you.
So so yes.
Good.
Yep.
Okay.
I can, I can provide that. Um, but in terms of a capital campaign for next year, we do not have any plans to do that. Um, but we want to talk about it. Earl and I met and we need to look at the MOU and have that discussion. Um, is it every other year or is it just for certain things? I'm not saying that we're not going to do it again. It's just not in the plan for this next year. We feel the hundred and fifty was a big lift for us for this year. And um, so, but we can definitely have a meeting and talk about it and what should we be doing for the future?
Okay, and then what was the net profit from the barn party this year?
Um, it was very good, um, because we had it at the Village Club and our expenses were way lower because there were things like toilets and lights. I mean, it was um, so um, oh gosh, what, um, like forty-five thousand?
Okay.
Was net. Um, we had um lower top-line revenue, but lower expenses. Um, and so it worked out really well. We actually netted more than we did the prior year.
Great.
Yeah. And that's our, a very important part of our fundraiser every year, fundraising efforts.
Are you stopping there? Are you, I mean, is there more coming or?
That's, that's the end of my presentation, so we're happy to answer any questions.
Well, I don't have questions, but I want, and I'll pick up a little bit on what Susan was saying. But but before I do, and and because I want to talk about what's not in the plan. But before I do, I want to talk about what is in the plan. And I want to talk about and start off by in recognition of what's been accomplished in these last few years, in particular this last year. It's just, it's been extraordinary what the land preserve and staff have done in activating Quincy Farm for our community. Um, and in a manner, and this is important, and in a manner that is not only consistent with the conservation easement, the values in the con- but enhances those values. And and I really, really applaud you. The programs have continued to grow as your numbers bear out. Uh, the awareness has continued to grow. It's been, it's been incredible. And I think Quincy Farms is becoming what we all hope, which is to become an integral part of the educational and and recreational infrastructure of the city. Um, so in the words of Joe Biden, thank you, thank you, thank you. He always says it three times. But to to the land preserves, Alan, to you and to your board and to Emily, our intrepid Emily, I mean, it's just incredible what 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 we've done. And we all know it was a tough year because of three hundred and we still accomplished all of those things. So just, you know, can't say it enough. But then you go on and say, but there's still more to do. And one of the things that I'd like to see, and I did, you and I talked about it a little bit, is is I'd like to see as part of the twenty twenty-five plan that staff and the land preserve work to replace the MOU with another written document. And I'm saying a written document because I don't want to get into the weeds about is it a contract, is it a this, is it a that? That's something that it clarifies the roles and obligations of the parties going forward. Um, I don't think that it's, I think from where this thing started, three, four, five years ago, fundraising, what have you, there is a tension between where the land preserve is and where I think council is or the city is. And we need to get rid of that tension. And what I want to see happen is, is that when we get done with this, if Joe Blow comes off the street and asks a director of the land preserve, what is it that the land preserve is going to do with regard to fundraising? He will get the same answer as if he asked somebody on city council. And right now that it, that that's not the case. That does, that doesn't happen and I want to eliminate that because that tension is always there, even though the working relationship has been terrific. Staff has worked great with with land preserve. A lot has been accomplished in spite of that. But I really feel like that needs to get resolved and clarified and 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 moved out of the way. And I'm not saying how it needs to get moved out of the way. I can see all kinds of different ways, but it just needs to get done where when we end up, it's like I said, you ask anybody on your board or you ask anybody in staff or you ask anybody on council and the answer is the same.
Well, and I I do think, Earl, this year, we accomplished that. We said we will do the hundred and fifty thousand and we worked really hard on top of our operating budget, fundraising that's going on right now. Um, so we we all felt very good about this year. Um, it was in the, it was in the plan and I think we need to take a minute and just celebrate that it wasn't, you know, um, it was very smooth actually this year. So I agree that um the MOU is is not clear. Uh, you know, it says if agreed upon projects is kind of how we read it. But um, you and I talked and um as part of our planning and we're meeting about long-range planning or or um a strategic plan for CHLP. What should our role be? And then we'll get together with staff and Earl, if you're our um de facto liaison. Um, and that will be part of it, obviously.
And that, and that's great. I, and again, I agree with what you said.
Yeah.
But even in that, that you, it gets to what I'm talking about because I'm not talking about, hey, just an annual plan and an annual goal. I am talking about an overall broad-based understanding of what the land preserves roll. And by the way, I'm not saying what it should be. I actually have a view about how it's going to go and it probably isn't what most people think. But it ain't going to happen until the parties get there and go, look.
Absolutely.
This is what we're going to do. Okay, then this is what we're going to do. Okay, then let's memorial. That process has to happen from a broad base, not, hey, what did we do in twenty twenty-four or what are we going to do in twenty twenty-five? That's down into the weeds.
And and.
And that, and so that's.
That strategic planning is what we are, we have identified. We had a whole um board meeting about that. And we will be starting that right after the holiday. And it dovetails exactly into this topic and many others.
So so what I'm hearing is, is that at least, subject to my my fellow colleagues here, but that will be something that we can add to the twenty twenty-five plan, that we're going to do that. That's part of our twenty twenty-five plan is that we're going to.
Look at a strategic.
Replace that MOU and clarify the roles. In addition, I think.
Counselor Holden, real quick, on that specific point.
Yes.
And it may be for your next one too. I just would recommend that you add a condition to a motion to add that to the plan.
Well, we were, we're just talking right now. I mean, I don't, I I have no idea what these people want to do.
I understand. I'm just, I'm just clarifying that if that is something that you or anybody else wishes to do, the best vehicle.
Mechanism, yes.
Mechanism is to just do it with a condition.
I also think, this, again, this is what I think. I think we need to take up this year and with a view towards council approving a vision for Quincy Farms. And whatever that means, okay? Every year the plan comes, there's a vision there. It's never approved. In fact, it's specifically not approved. We specifically don't approve the vision despite what a former mayor had to say. Um, but I think that we need to get towards that. And I think that, uh, and in fact, there's a document on your website, a strategic roadmap that I think is a good starting point, which probably you're utilizing for what you've been talking about with your board. It's a good starting point for discussions with staff to basically, and I'm not saying that that's the final thing. I'm saying it drives towards getting to a point where sometime during the year we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna approve that vision. Because at the end of the day, all of your annual plans, and we approve them on an annual basis, but you guys are putting them together based on that vision that hasn't been approved. And I, and I, I actually don't think that that's fair. I think that somewhere there, there needs to be a vision that actually council has said, yes, this is where we think we're going and so therefore it makes sense that every annual plan is in furtherance of that vision at that point in time. That's something that I'd like to see as in part of the twenty twenty-five CHLP plan as well. And again, I've seen look on Emily's face, she may not agree. So I mean, this may not go anywhere. And then the other thing, which a neighbor of mine told me, is evidently he's telling me that there are a bunch of dead trees uh over the path, over the, over the trail, and uh he wants them down. And I'm saying, hey, if there are, let's get them out of there.
Um, Davy Tree has been out last week and I think we'll be coming back this week to do tree work at Quincy Farm, so.
And there's that one big dead one right on Quincy that I've.
Those, those big ones, we're working with XL. We can, we can actually do nothing. XL has to actually take the power off of that line for that tree to come down because of the uh voltage in that line. It's not a normal line. So they have to actually cut power for a number of hours and we're currently working with them on getting that scheduled.
Figure that out.
So you're telling me that XL doesn't want to cut down a tree?
I know.
No, they do, but at our cost.
Probably because it's dead.
No, because we actually want to cut this one down.
Because we want it down, they will do it for our cost.
Counselor Holden. Anyway, I I wanted, those things are out there. And again, we'll hear some comments from these people. And then, and then if we get consensus, then then it needs to be added, added to there. I think if your point, if it's not, then you go ahead. But but all I want to say is, is those are the things I'd like to see added. I think everything else in the plan makes, makes a hell of a lot of sense. And it's been an extraordinary twenty twenty-four and staff and the land preserve are to be hugely congratulated. Those are my comments.
Well, and I I guess I would, I would add, I agree with your point particularly about um more of a long-term vision. You know, and I know from being on the visioning committee with Charlie Maguire as the chair back in the day. I mean, I I guess what I'd like to say is there is a vision for Quincy Farm. Um, there have been several iterations of that vision. Um, that, the original visioning document was adopted by council back in the day. So that might be a good starting point. We might need to dust it off and revisit. Maybe that's not accurate anymore, but there, a lot of great work and thought went into that. Um, we got very hung up in trying to agree on a long-term vision. And I think that took us down a really convoluted path. We sort of set that aside and decided to just make, you put one foot in front of the other. And we've done that for a few years and we've made wonderful progress. And I, there does need to be a transition from walking um to at least having a a big picture direction of where we're walking. Because I think you're right. It's not fair to the land preserve. It's not fair to staff. It's not really fair to anybody that the direction could change with whoever happens to be sitting at this dais or whoever happens to be on land preserve's board, whatever that is. Um, but I'm very sensitive to derailing the progress that we're making now. And so I I guess I'd like to explore how much I I think we could take on. And maybe what I could agree might be a good plan in twenty twenty-five is to revisit the documents and the work that was done and try to pull out pieces that we think are still relevant or or make a determination, is this still relevant, is it not? Um, and what can be kept and what can be repurposed moving forward or what needs to just be let go?
May I jump in? Um, we did that before and we came up with a strategic roadmap and it's a two-page document. Um, it's on our website. We shared it with council, but like a year and a half ago. Um, but you know, it it, it's the broad stroke, like um the, you know, the east side's the educational hub with the, you know, the barn and the support building. So we've been using that to say, oh, twenty-five should look at the farmhouse because we need the eighty, the bathrooms, right? Um, so I do think that's a really good starting point and then look backwards as well um on the visioning. And I also think um, I also think it's time to do that. Um, I think the residents, I I, I got so many calls about Quincy Farm um all summer. Um, and I think it would really help residents to kind of see, oh, what what is going to happen to that um place? And uh, not the details, but just the broad stroke um concepts. And then, you know, each year that nice annual plan just fits in nicely with with that roadmap. So we, I I agree a hundred percent. That's our plan to start as well. So it's, it's a great time. We've done enough with the yearly and we've had some great progress. And now it's like, all right, what should come next? And so I agree and I think that's, should be, the, doing that should be part of the twenty twenty-five plan, some sort of. It doesn't have to be a huge, you know, twelve-page document at all, but just a, and that's why we kind of called it a roadmap um that could be reviewed, worked on, and then I guess approved at some point. Because that never happened. We even say that, shown to council, but you know, not approved.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I have to say, I uh, having lived with Quincy Farm. I, you know, I have to say, I, having lived with the Quincy Farm situation for eight years, there is just a part of me, frankly, that wants to spend 95%, maybe 98% of the time with my pom poms out cheering the progress that's been done. It was so many years that it seemed like just struggling and not as much progress. And that's not reflection on individuals or any of that. But it was, you know, I am so grateful for the efforts and relieved in some respects with the progress that's gone on. Sure, there's more to be done next year. No question about it. And, and yet I feel that it's sort of a part of a natural evolution. I mean, we know so much more about the place, the potential, the, you know, about the, the buildings, everything, that we're just in a better place to take that next step and, and start to become a little clearer as, as we go forward. But I think it's, my hat's off to you and the board, your board and Emily and, you know, I, I think we're, we're making things happen and that's just great. And I think, you know, even though I'm a short timer, measured in hours, I suppose, you know, I, I'm confident it'll continue. And I think that's great. And I do think the clarity and the better definitions and all of that is a, a natural part of that continued evolution. Well done.
So Earl has brought up two proposed additions. Does anyone else have other thoughts or?
This seems incomplete to me as an annual plan. And it, I guess in terms of programming, it says, we're going to do programming. It's going to be in these areas, but it's, it doesn't, we're going to do three programs a month, or we're going to do these programs in February and these in March. I mean, you must have an idea because you did them, you did programming last year, right? We don't have any, any information about what kind of money you're spending on the programming, what kind of money you're contributing to the programming. I, it just seems incomplete to me to approve as a plan. I'm, I'm, you know, is there a vision? Should we have a vision in here? I think this is a first draft of a plan. And I agree, it's tremendous what's been going on out there. But I think because we've had so much discuss, there should be more detail in this plan about what's going to happen next year than what we've got. We've got a lot of detail about what the city's going to spend from a capital perspective.
Yes.
But we don't have much detail on anything else.
Well, and we're working on our budget now. It's end of year. Janie and I are in charge of that, based on some of the new things that are outlined in the plan. Donor appreciation, you know, the programs, there's, there are a couple of attachments there. And that attachment is very detailed on how many people come to a certain kind of program. And so that, that's in the
That's all retroactive.
It is, but it, it's very similar to then what we would be doing next year. I don't have all those details ironed out at this point at all. But I can, I mean, I could add a page on program specifics a little more detailed than, than what you see. And I'm happy to do that.
That and, and the budget.
Yeah, that's, yep.
Another thing that I raised last year that I was concerned about, the last time we talked about this, was the agreement says that funds raised for the Quincy Farm will be put into a dedicated account. Has that been set up?
Yes, yes. Yep. And all the money that we raise for, for example, for the barn is very separate. It's tracked separately. Yep.
So it's deposited into a dedicated account, not into the general Cherry Hills, or Cherry Hills Land Preserve account?
Yes, we have different accounts. Yep. And you can see that on our financials.
Okay.
Counsel Sheldon.
Thanks. It is not lost on me, the great work you've done recently, in the last year or two. I, for one, do not feel any tension or, that's not the word you used, Earl, but used a word. Maybe you used tension. I don't feel any tension. The only tension I felt past tense was the land preserve hitting that 150 commitment towards the barn. And I got good news last week from our staff that you guys did hit that with a forward commitment for, you know, some of that money to come in in 25. So that's great. I have no, I have no issues there. And for what it's worth, my recollection is that we never really truly addressed whether or not future capital campaigns would be specific to projects or whether they would be just ongoing capital campaigning, trying to raise more money. I don't recall us ever really deciding that path. While the latter would be nice, if you guys had the manpower and the bandwidth and the connections and whatnot to be able to go out and continually do it, knowing that you don't have a specific project in which to allocate those to right now. I think we know we have plenty of projects, whether it's on our list of capital at the city level or the older Quincy Farm long range plan that was done. There's plenty of projects out there. Now, I would be okay if the council or the next council decided to make it project specific as well and just do targeted goals. And saying that we've got a new project we're going to do, whatever that may be, and it's a million dollars and the land preserve is going to go out and seek 20% of that to be fundraised. However, the next council wants to do it, I think that either way would be fine with me. It'd be great if you guys could keep going, but I would imagine hitting up donors, it's hard when you can't tell them what they're donating for. So I would imagine that being a little bit of a challenge from a fundraising perspective. And I'm, I am fine putting in a condition, if we were to move forward with this plan tonight, I'm fine putting a condition in there that a revision to the MOU or some other kind of piece of paper get generated here as part of the 2025 capital plan for a 2025 agreement to get drafted and struck of some kind. I would also be fine if this were to get kicked out another meeting or two because it needed refinement. I, I think the work, I guess my bottom line is that the work you're doing with us and with our citizens is super important and it's greatly appreciated. And frankly, we don't have a ton of people. We maybe have one or possibly two others out there that would possibly be interested in this role. But I, for one, am very appreciative of the land preserve and the role you guys have in the city right now, partnering with the city on this project. So I'd like to make your life as smooth and seamless as possible. And I know you, you and the land preserve feel kind of the same way, I would think, about trying to make our lives governing the allocation of the funds as easy and seamless as possible. So in closing on this topic, I guess I am going to listen to the rest of the deliberation and then we'll figure something out. But thank you.
And before you, before you go, I want, because you clearly listen to people and then you realize you miscommunicated. Although we do have lawyers on this thing. I was using tension, as you might hear about it in law schools, tension between competing interests, like a constitutional situation, not tension hasn't, you mother across the table. That's not the tension that I'm talking about. I'm talking about a natural tension that exists between two parties that are operating on different understandings at this point in time. Because over the course of two or three years, things haven't been discussed that should have been discussed or may, or maybe there shouldn't have been, whatever. And they've morphed along and they've moved along and oozed along and parties found themselves in understanding different things. And that's a natural tension, not anxiety, if you will. So if I used the wrong word, but I was using it in that manner. So sorry if I miscommunicated.
So what is the, I, I guess I can, I also understand Counsel McGuire's point that the annual plan, I guess I too would like to see a little more detail about what the programming is and what the budget for the land preserve spending on that is because in, in all honesty, because I, I want to make sure that people realize the investment that the land preserve is making, you know? It's one thing to say, oh, we're going to do programming. It's another thing to say, we're going to do 30 events and spend 50 grand on it. Right? And so I, I, is there a timeframe reason that?
No, we, we absolutely could bring this back again. We had originally scheduled this at the last meeting. You might recall to give ourselves a little wiggle room to try and get this done within the calendar year. But there is no magic formula that requires us, there's no funding contingent upon the plan being approved in 2024. I would just offer, if counsel does want to continue it, to remember that the January 7th meeting is our business meeting. So it would need to be continued to January 21st. That's all I would say.
How do people feel about that?
My feeling is that when I look at the document, it's a little more retrospective. And I, I do think that a plan really has to be forward looking. You know, what are we going to do and what's it going to cost and all the rest of it? So I would, I would encourage going back and kind of redrafting this with that forward look and, and some degree of specificity and then bringing it back on the 21st. I, I think that'd be, I won't be here, but
And then
But I think, I think that would serve land preserve and
Yeah, and I, and I can add more detail, certainly by then. That won't be a problem in terms of
And then our new council members there. And then what about Earl's concept of, would we like to request that the, that, that in that revision, that we also add a provision to replace the MOU with, how did you, say it again?
I just had a written document that clarifies relationships and the roles more fully than is exist in that MOU. And, and I might just add
Specific to fundraising? I mean, all broader, but
Specific, because the point is, is I will tell you right now, what I have in my mind is the fact that people have a problem from this plan. I'm not, I'm not surprised at all because that's exactly what I'm talking about. I know things were going and drifting in different directions. And you all are basically affirming, you're focusing on the numbers, rightfully so, but affirming why there needs to be some more discussion about this relationship. And by the way, it's not broken. It, it just means there needs to be, it's an evolutionary process. Relationship is great, but now some more needs to be done in order to get done what a lot of people have said they want to see here.
To clarify, Katie, there's kind of, it would seem to me, having a line item that says, we're going to revisit the MOU and all of that as, I don't want to confuse that with, we'll have an MOU as a part of this by the 21st because I think that's
No, no. No, no, no. And I can't agree on that at all. I can't even, I'm a little nervous to say yes, a revised MOU without meeting with our board. So, but your language was, what are our roles? Let's define them better in writing.
Yeah, update the MOU.
Yes.
Okay. Work on that.
But I'm, I'm saying, I think that, you know, we were going to do it in a previous year. We decided not to. One of the reasons is because everybody was afraid to deal with the issue. So we said, let's just let this drift. I don't want to let this drift anymore. Okay? There are things that need to be discussed and resolved and I'm confident it can be done, but there needs to be a willingness to do it.
And where I'm going on that is, I think what you're saying is with, with Randy is the idea that this is an evaluation of the MOU. I don't want to make a commitment to anything other than an evaluation and action upon the outcome of that discussion to amend, replace, adopt as determined. Because I don't know, until tonight, I didn't really think too much about this issue. And so the idea there is really that if it's wrong, I'll learn about it in the next year and we'll fix it as needed.
Okay. Okay, so revisit. No, I think, I don't think we need a motion at this point if, if we're going to continue
I think we would consider, consider the staff direction. We will incorporate it into the revised version that you see.
And it probably, it probably would be good. You guys talk fairly often, I think, as well. But I'm thinking, Ellen, you know, chatting with Chris and kind of getting
Oh, that, that's, that's what we do. That's, yeah. We have team meetings every month. Yeah.
I'll just add one bit of input from a staff perspective. I think staff is in agreement that taking the next evolutionary step on the relationship, to Earl's point, it is not broken. It works very well. But are there opportunities and benefits for both sides for more clarity? I, I think staff would agree and we would, we would welcome the opportunity.
Okay. All right, so it is quarter to 10. We're going to try to power through, and I apologize, Director Farman, that we keep leaving you till
We do need a motion, though, to continue it.
Oh, we need a motion to continue. All right. Is there a motion to continue to January 21st?
Moved to continue.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Wheel, seconded by Counsel Blum. All in favor? Any opposed? Nobody? Okay. Counsel Bill 7, Series 2024. Thank you, Ellen, by the way, and thank you, Emily Black. Thanks for staying so long, twice in a row.
And again, thank you for a fabulous 2024 year. I don't want to lose sight of that.
Counsel Bill 7, Series 2024, amending the 2024 budget by approving supplemental appropriations related to the American Rescue Plan Act grant funds and the general fund for information technology subscriptions. On second and final reading, Director Farman.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. The first part of this requested budget amendment is related to the American Rescue Plan Act. And we are requesting to expend the, the final $32,000 on top of the 1.3 million. So the city would, in essence, expend all of those funds by the end of 2024. So we won't have the cost of continu- continually reporting and auditing the grant proceeds. We have repurposed the adopted budget of 1.3 million. So we're spending those on police officer salaries in 2024. So we're repurposing those, those seven capital projects that are in the adopted budget, we are proposing to expend those out of the capital fund via a $1.2 million transfer from the, from the general fund. So that is also part of the proposed budget supplemental. The second part of this budget supplemental appropriation request is related to a governmental accounting standard. And we've talked about this a little bit, but it's on information technology subscriptions. And we're required to capitalize the full contract amount in the initial contract year. And that would affect the general fund. So we're estimating that to be $242,000. So that's part of our request for the budget supplemental. So the request for the general fund would be 1,442,000. And with the 32,000 from the ARPA fund, this is the supplemental appropriation request. And that's the end of my presentation. If we have any questions?
This is all happening in 2024? As you're closing out the year, it's not 2025 issue, right?
Right. The federal requirement is to obligate or kind of reserve those funds as being spent. But we're just trying to spend, 2026 is the final year you can spend those grant proceeds.
Other questions? Counsel Holden?
No. I was just going to
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Move to approve Counsel Bill 7, Series 2024, a bill for an ordinance of the City of Cherry Hills Village, amending the 2024 budget by approving supplemental appropriations related to the American Rescue Plan Act grant funds and the general fund for information technology subscriptions. On second and final reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counsel Eber?
Aye.
Counsel Holden?
Aye.
Counsel Wheel?
Aye.
Counsel Sheldon?
Aye.
Counsel Blum?
Aye.
Counsel McGuire?
Aye.
Item D, the 2025 proposed budget. Director Farman.
Thank you very much. Before we get started here, I just want to make a note, there were two edits in the council's packet related to this 2025 proposed budget. But the actual proposed budget at the back of the packet, that was completely accurate. There were just a couple of edits to a couple, a couple of those pages. But just to make sure that the budget documented itself was accurate. And we do have an update this evening. And we kind of talked about this a little bit with the city land preserve update. And that is on the Quincy Farm Big Barn Project. It was budgeted in 2024, but it will be completed hopefully early in 2025. But we will need to reappropriate $670,000 of that budget into 2025. So that's simply just a timing issue, does not impact fund balance. The project will be budgeted in the capital fund using a transfer from the Parks Fund to pay for the project, along with that $150,000 funding from the, the land preserve. And lastly, the appropriations are rising by 1.34 million since the city needs to appropriate not only the project costs, but also the interfund transfer, since those are both part of the appropriations. The general fund update, one, one final item is on the workers' compensation budget. We talked about those premiums before, but now those, those are finalized and we are happy to say that happy to say that they are within the, the budget estimate for 2025, so we would not propose any changes there. Now, in reviewing, uh, the 2025 proposed budget totals, here are the 2024 and 2025 summaries for all city funds, and those do include the 2024 budget amendment adopted by council this evening. We have the city operating revenues. Those are expected to grow by 1.6 million or 9% to 18.7 million in 2025. And the city expenditures, which are the operations and capital expenditures, are expectly, expected, expected to be roughly flat next year at 17.8 million. And then the total appropriations are 20.25 million for council consideration, and that includes expenditures, IT, subscription capitalization, and interfund transfers. In looking at the general fund, we have no change, so council did see this information on the first reading. In looking at the capital fund expenditures, we now have rolled in that 670,000 for the Big Barn project, so, um, that total is 2,881,380 for 2025. And you can see it includes a Parks transfer of 822,500. But the projected capital fund ending fund balance is the same at 471,000.
Randy's cheering the electric mowers over here. I knew where that was coming from.
In looking at the Parks and Recreation Fund, we do have that increased interfund transfer to the capital fund of 670,000, but the ending fund balance has not changed from the first reading. And then just quickly going through the other, uh, funds for the city, there are no other Here are the other funds that are in the 2025 budget. And the long-range financial forecast, we don't have any other changes to that as well. And that's the end of my presentation. I can take questions at this time.
I know that was fast. That is a lot of information, and it's very important information. Does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns?
Well, I just, you know, and this is the time when you sit back and ask if there's anything missing on a line item or whatever, and one of the things, and I've mentioned this to staff, and I don't know, I'd, I'd like to know that there is some dough in the budget, or it can be maneuvered with regard to security for Quincy Farms next year. I continue to be concerned in whether that's a camera system or whether, and, and there's, and I know that there's all kinds of plans afoot, et cetera, but what I want to know is, is that, that there, there is funding in this budget that if we come up with a solution that we think does what we need to do to provide the security that we want on Quincy Farms, that it's in there. And so that's why I'm raising it at this time. It's a budgetary thing.
Absolutely. And, and I will, um, let council know that these are discussions that staff has been having as well. And, you know, um, over time, the conditions and the context at Quincy Farm have changed. Um, everyone might remember the fire, for example. Um, so I do think that we have been discussing really a two-phase plan. Uh, a first phase would be more of an interim solution with, there's no internet access on the west side. It creates a lot of costs and challenges. Um, we did do an analysis of a security, sort of an old-school security monitoring system like is, that exists here for City Hall, for example. It was very pricey on a year-over-year basis for a facility that really doesn't have nearly as much traffic or use that would justify those kind of costs. So with that in mind, we have a two-phase plan where we're gonna look at sort of an initial, sort of stopgap measure that will last for either a few months or shortly thereafter. Um, and then we have identified a target solution that would be on a more permanent basis, that would integrate well with our current, um, safety analysis, specifically the flock cameras. We want to ensure, though, that we, we want to test that out, we want to work with it. I'm not even sure if it's actually totally released yet. So that's why we have an interim solution in mind. From, from a budget perspective, um, we would be able to, uh, handle that within our operations budget on both counts, both for the interim and the long-term solution.
Okay.
So I guess I'm, it's a very long way of saying.
Yes.
You think you got it covered.
We think you're gonna go.
And the only other question I have is, uh, which I tend to ask, and so Commander, from a, from a police department perspective, to the best of your knowledge, to the best of yours and the chief's knowledge, this budget reflects what you guys think you need in order to provide this, the safety and security to the level of this community is expecting.
Absolutely. The chief and I, um, as well as other staff within the department, have had many conversations about this. We looked very hard at what we needed looking forward to next year, and everything that we could identify, we've included in this, in this budget, and we feel that we have everything that we need in this.
Great, terrific.
I've, I've got a question, I guess, maybe, um, for Doug and Jay. If, if the council in 2025 decided to make some improvements to Colorado Boulevard, Mansfield, Hamden Corridor, um, are there monies in our surplus or capital fund that could be, become appropriated or become available for infrastructure?
I think there's sufficient, uh, city resources. Uh, I'm not sure what the magnitude of those costs would be.
I, I don't even know what the scope I'm asking you to opine to is. I just, I, I know the answer is yes, we have some money. I just want to maybe put it on the record that the city does have some funds if there were some projects that made some sense to the citizens and to council and staff and that could get designed and approved and whatnot, that there's some money there to, to throw at a potential solution to a problem if council and, uh, had decided to do that.
Yes, as, as Director Farman said, there are funds in the reserves, um, like I said, I can't opine about the costs, but, um, we would need to do some studies and, and come up with some plans and do a lot of public meetings.
Understood.
I, I would, I would say, if, if we're talking about the kind of improvements, for example, what was outlined in the master plan regarding, uh, modifications along the entire stretch of Mansfield, that would reduce speeds and maybe add some trails, that would likely, we would have to budget for that, of something of that magnitude. But some of these other things, you know, bumping out a curb, adding paint, we certainly have the budget for that sort of stuff.
Thanks.
Well, I guess, and I just comment on that, and that was per my comment that I made there, we have large reserves. I mean, the point is, is we're gonna need them down the road, but the point is, is you move from 13 years to eight years. I mean, we have a lot of money, and a lot could be done. I'm just on record going, it'll never be done, but I think we have to look at it. We have to look at exactly those kinds of plans and put them together. They are roundabout types of things. There are things that can be done. That will cost some millions of dollars. This community will never approve it, but I don't know that. That's just what I think. But we have an obligation to look into that and to propose it. And start all over again.
I also think that the reality of a solution of that magnitude is that, given the processes that we would have to go through, we're not looking at a 2025 expenditure. At most, we'd be looking at a, a study with an expert, you know, hiring an engineering firm to do that, so.
Good point.
Yeah.
I move to approve Council Bill 8, Series 2024, a bill for the ordinance adopting a budget and levying property taxes for the City of Cherry Hills Village, Colorado for fiscal year 2025, on second and final reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council Eber?
Aye.
Council Holen?
Aye.
Council Wheel?
Aye.
Council Sheldon?
Aye.
Council Blum?
Aye.
Council McGuire?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Do I go, go again? We're on a roll, Susan.
Hey. I move to approve Council Bill 9, Series 2024, a bill for an ordinance of the City of Cherry Hills Village, Colorado, authorizing appropriations for fiscal year 2025, on second and final reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council Eber?
Aye.
Council Holen?
Aye.
Council Wheel?
Aye.
Council Sheldon?
Aye.
Council Blum?
Aye.
Council McGuire?
Aye.
That also passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Resolution 18, Series 2024, amending and restating the city's purchasing policy. Also, Director Farman.
All right, thank you very much. There is an update from the September 3rd council meeting discussion about the purchasing policy, and I will get into the more details of that in a moment. Um, we also had, uh, council members, Holen and McGuire also were kind enough to come in and review the updated policy, and their input has been incorporated in this updated policy. So I appreciate their feedback. The main goals for this update, and you, and you can tell the original policy was in 1980, updated in 2015, so the main goals for this update were to create a user-friendly document for city staff that was, had clear procedures during various procurement situations, and also added operational flexibility, particularly for Public Works and the Police Department when they're in the field, and also to maintain strong internal controls for prudent spending. As you recall, these are, um, the similar tables one and two that you saw in the first iteration of the policy, and this is Section 6, and that relates to the goal of maintaining appropriate internal controls. So in both tables, the purchase must be budgeted, and that information has been clarified in Section A and defined as budgeted, which is specifically presented to the city council and adopted in the annual budget. As early budget estimates may also fluctuate between the time of presenting the budget and also, and between the time of purchasing, the budgeted amounts are also to include expenditure costs up to 10% of that budget estimate. Table 1 outlines, uh, non-capital goods and services purchases, and the authorized signer would be an employee position specifically approved by the city manager and delegated to approve purchases up to $20,000. Now, the authorizer is the director, as authorized by the city manager, to approve those purchases, again, which are budgeted, up to $50,000. So the city manager may approve these purchases budgeted up to $100,000 before needing to go to the city council for approval. So just a simple example, the city manager authorizes, uh, the Public Works manager to be an authorized signer. That manager makes a purchase of de-icing materials of $5,000 in the field, specifically outlined in the, in the adopted budget. The Public Works Director approves that purchase as the authorizer of the transaction. So Table 2 outlines budgeted capital purchases that are only authorized and approved by the city directors and/or the city manager. City council approval would be required for budgeted purchases over $300,000. After the September 3rd council meeting, we had four main discussion points that were identified. The first one would be to add some clarity to the authorizer and the authorized signer, and those definitions are located in Section 4, Definitions of the Proposed Policy. So the authorized signer is the director, manager, supervisor, or other authorized city position delegated by the city manager to authorize city purchases up to specific dollar limits as authorized in this policy. Now, the authorized signer makes the purchase subject to the authorizer, which is the director or the city manager delegated by the city manager to authorize that purchase. So these are authorized individuals and cannot make unanticipated purchases. The policy also clarifies a budgeted expenditure, which I noted, um, on the slide earlier, but that's in Section 6, and those expenditures would be specifically presented to council and adopted in the annual budget. The third major discussion point that we noted relates to Tables 3 and 4, unanticipated expenditures. So we determined there was a lot of discussion and a little bit of angst that was perceived from council, and since there is such a small volume of these unanticipated expenditures throughout the year, staff is simply proposing to update the current policy threshold, which is $10,000, to update that to $25,000. So that would allow the city manager to authorize unanticipated expenditures up to $25,000, but still within authorized appropriations adopted in the budget. The last focal point that we identified was around emergency. How is emergency defined? How would it be communicated? What's the appropriate threshold before requiring council approval of funds? And due to staff reviewing these types of expenditures, again, it's been determined that the current provision, which is also the same provision as the City of Lone Tree, is sufficient at $100,000. So we are recommending no change to that emergency provision of unanticipated expenditures. Uh, we talked to the Public Works Director, and he confirmed that that was a sufficient level to secure an emergency site, that we could envision that type of an emergency. So Section 6B2 is proposed to remain unchanged, and it will, would remain the same as in the city's current policy for emergency. In summary, we believe that this policy provides sufficient spending controls and the city funds, that also includes council oversight, while also being able to incorporate our operational flexibility. And I think, you can look at those tables, it really increases the ability to audit our purchase transactions. We have, the first day of the auditor coming in today, and they're already looking at who's approving which transactions. So this really provides a clear outline on which transactions need what type of approvals. So that's the end of the presentation. I can answer any questions from council?
Where is the provision for, um, reporting on unanticipated and non-emergency unanticipated expenditure? How, how does that get reported to the council?
That's still in the proposed policy to be reported. So we do have a contract, um, let me get to that section. Uh, contract signature authority on page 6, which is Section 6. City manager is authorized to execute contracts for goods and services. City manager may delegate signing authority, and then the city manager shall provide city council with a copy of each executed contract and purchase order in a monthly report, regardless of whether it was budgeted or anticipated. So budgeted and unanticipated would be part of that report.
Mayor, I have utmost confidence in Councilors Holen and McGuire.
I can tell you that's stupid.
To, to handle this, I, I would like to make a motion.
Please do.
I move to approve Resolution 18, Series 2024, amending and restating the city's purchasing policy.
Second.
The moved and seconded, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Moving on to page 3 of the agenda, um, I will now, at 10:09 PM, recess the city council meeting and convene the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village, Charlestown, Part 3, filing General Improvement District Board. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Board Member Eber?
Here.
Board Member Holen?
Here.
Board Member Wheel?
Happy to be here.
Chair Brown?
Here.
Board Member Sheldon?
Here.
Board Member Blum?
Here.
Board Member McGuire?
Here.
Are you still the clerk in these meetings? We're just board members, but I'm still the clerk, okay? Um, the item of business is the consent agenda?
Moved to approve.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, Resolution 3, Series 2024, adopting the GID budget for 2025. Director Farman.
Good evening, Board Chair Brown and board members. The GID has now received final assessed values from the county, and the 2024 mill levy for 2025 collections is estimated to increase to 10 mills, up from 7. Um, there are two main reasons for that mill levy increase. Uh, there was a tax abatement this year, which was an, an error, I guess, in the assessor's calculation, so that did impact the AVs by 5%. And there's also higher debt service payment next year of 4,450. And so the expenditures are expected to rise by that increase, and also, we need to leave, uh,
close to $35,000 in the fund for a debt service reserve along with Tabor.
Okay.
And I can answer any questions. That's the end of the brief presentation.
Somebody? Anybody?
I move to...
Go ahead.
I move to approve resolution three, series 2024, resolution of the Cherry Hills Village, Charlestown Park, Third Filing, General Improvement District, Board of Directors, summarizing expenditures and revenues, adopting a budget, setting the mill levy, and appropriating funds for the GID for the calendar year beginning on the first day of January 2025 and ending on the last day of December 2025.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. One quick question, have they been notified of that? They already know that of that increase, or no? The GID members?
The residents.
The residents?
No.
Okay.
We're going to certify the mill levy this week, though, with the county.
Okay.
So this is unofficial until the county...
Okay. And have we, I think we talked a while back about providing notice to them about these meetings? Yeah, they've done that, and they just, nobody's...
Of the meetings.
We send letters. Great, thank you. Okay. I, at 10:12, adjourn the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village, Charlestown Park, Third Filing, General Improvement District Board, and at 10:12, call to order the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village, Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway, General Improvement District Board. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Board member Eber?
Here.
Board member Holland?
Here.
Board member Wheel?
Happy to be here.
Chair Brown?
Here.
Board member Sheldon?
Here.
Board member Blum?
Here.
Board member Maguire?
Here.
The consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Resolution three, series 24, 2024, adopting the GID budget for 2025. Director Farman?
Good evening, Board Chair Brown and board members. The mill levy is estimated at 10.5 mills for 2025 collections, and that is down from 12.8 last year. The revenues are estimated at $16,403 and expenditures at $19,010, and leaving an estimated fund balance of $11,058. And the reason why we are able to drop that, we've had some accumulated additional fund balances, so we're trying to bring that mill levy down as far as we can for 2025.
Great, thank you. Entertain a motion?
I move to approve resolution three, series 2024, resolution of the Cherry Hills Village, Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway, General Improvement District, Board of Directors, summarizing expenditures and revenues, adopting a budget, setting the mill levy, and appropriating funds for the GID for the calendar year beginning on the first day of January 2025 and ending on the last day of December 2025.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. At 10:14, I will adjourn the meeting of the Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway, General Improvement District Board, and reconvene the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village City Council, moving on to reports. I just have one item to report, and that is that at our January meeting, for the last two meetings, what I've really been trying to accomplish is to make those of you who are going off of council not have any regrets. But I did just want to point out that there will be an opportunity at that meeting for everyone to speak about everyone else, and particularly those of you who are outgoing to make an address. And so I just wanted to put that in your head, that, you know, you might want to jot down some thoughts.
Are you thinking, like, airing of grievances?
Yes, totally isn't airing.
Is it like a roast?
It's Festus, exactly.
Is it like a roast, like the...
Yeah, exactly. But we're just going to roast Dan. But no, particularly those of you who are outgoing, I wanted you to know that you will have an opportunity to make a parting statement, and, you know, if you choose to make some notes, or if you just want to wing it, that's up to you. Just wanted to let you know. Councilor Maguire, let's start with you.
No report.
Please report. No report.
No report.
No report.
No report, although I just would like to say to staff, there's no report, but thank you all for, I mean, for everything tonight and last time. I mean, these were two really difficult meetings, the budget, I mean, everything that went on. Just congratulations, great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
A couple small things. One, as you all know, I'm on the Centennial Airport Community Noise Roundtable. The issues that we discussed there are largely not of Cherry Hills issue because they're largely Albert County, places south and east that are still developing, and we're just frankly a little bit too far to the northwest. Nonetheless, this last year, you may recall that our dues had been stayed or abated because the fact that they had a surplus, and they didn't charge participants. This is not the case for next year. They have sent invoices that it's another assessment, but this time it's only going to be $500. It's my recommendation for the idea of $500, frankly, it gives us the ability to continue to monitor in case something comes up that does apply to us. It's largely associated with Centennial Airport, but it can also tie into the stuff going out of DIA. So it's my recommendation, and obviously subject to whatever decision made, to continue and if necessary, continue to attend those meetings, so.
Thank you.
I wanted to let you know about that. Number two, I wanted to thank city staff for all of the hard work that you guys do. It's, makes our ability a lot easier to do our jobs as councillor. In particular, last Wednesday night was, or Friday night, excuse me, was the winter celebration, another huge success for the city. Thank you to Emily and...
Yes.
A thousand helpers and other elves that make your event a huge and great success. Luckily, we had some pretty decent weather to allow setup. Mayor, you did a great job lighting the tree at the beginning.
Thank you.
And...
Such hard work.
Hard work, but it was hugely successful and consistent with the comment made by Ellen about activities at the farm. There, it astounds me the number of young families that exist in the village that come and participate, and there was no exception to that here. The other thing is, on behalf of the mayor, I went to the CML policy meeting and have a couple of things to report. There was some policy, some current legislation that is out there that they took positions on. One involved public safety, that Aurora is running a bill and looking for sponsor and trying to get language still drafted, but basically would do two things, and it would make it allowing localities to enforce expired license plates, on the theory that it's more important to have people current than necessarily the tax revenue that goes, or the revenue that goes along with it. It would have an amnesty policy upon the ability to prove that you are indigent. And the second thing that the bill is hoping to do is to allow localities to enforce expired plates. Right now, the way it works is that officers who write tickets have to decide, A, which county, and this is in particular somebody like Aurora, which is why Aurora's writing it, that they're actually in three counties. And they have to figure out which county it applies to, and then send the official to the right place, which takes time, energy away from their other duties. And if they could just enforce it in Aurora itself, it would be a lot easier for all of them. There was a wildlife bill that was supported that would increase prescribed burning and allow something called certified burners to specifically be added to the people that can do this type of activity. The idea is to increase the use of prescribed burns so we don't end up with huge forest fires. The only qualification that was given to that was the idea that we need to link it with air quality so that prescribed burns do not take place during bad air days. There was a third that was ag land in urban renewal applications. Historically, they've been allowed to be included in urban renewal applications that go towards the definition of urban blight, and this would eliminate that ability to do that. That was supported. Construction defects is going to come back again this year. They don't know exactly what it's going to look like, but they do think it's going to be kind of an uphill slog for the development community because of the same things that happened last year, but it's going to come back again. Kin to prior years and some of the overreach that could be coming from at the state level, there is a bill involving manufactured housing. One of the sponsors is our own Senator Bridges. It would establish a task and task and advisory committee to come up with regional, region-wide codes for modular housing. Routinely opposed by every member there and opposed unanimously as an overreach, again, by the state. There was one important one that is not yet a bill, but in the informational items, and that is what they are calling the "Yes in My Backyard." If you liked the brave application tonight, you're going to love this one. Regardless of zoning, a jurisdiction must allow residential development within its boundaries for institutions, undefined schools, and religious facilities, or religious institutions. Doesn't define what housing and residential is. Could be a 30-story apartment building, could be a mansion, could be anything because it's not yet defined. And as I said, regardless of zoning, it allows it. It preamps our ability to do anything. Obviously unanimously opposed by CML and all the members voting that day, but more that it was only an informational one at this time. So that's it. I wish everybody a very happy holidays for the rest of the month, and look forward to all of the things that we have coming next year.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, that is really a scary, I know our neighboring communities are very concerned about that. All right. City manager?
Real quick, just two things. I will include a summary of the CML Policy Committee that has a write-up of these bills for you to review in the weekly update on Friday. Two, I just want to thank staff. To Councilman Eber's point, there's a whole host of things to thank staff for. The budget process, Doug, I thank you for efforts on that. The budget process is also a team effort. Every single department really knocked it out of the park this year on the budget. Thank you to everyone. Paul, great job. For council's benefit, he had a doubleheader. Last night, he had Planning and Zoning Commission. He had this tonight. I'm glad it's done. Emily, I do want to thank you for the Winterfest and all of the parks crew. They did a great job of setting it up. I want to thank the weather for helping us out and making that easy. I want to thank you for the Quincy Farm Plan. I do think that we have an opportunity to really make, take that to the next step. You know, I had a chance, this council offered me an opportunity to come back to this position, and this staff is a big reason why. So thank you and have a good holiday season.
Just real quick, Councilman Holland, you touching on your point where your question you asked if we had everything we needed in the budget. As you'll all remember, earlier this year, you guys afforded us an opportunity to add to our staffing. I'm happy to report that at the time, we hired two lateral officers, so we were able to start them right away. Two officers, we were able to give an opportunity to go into the academy. For the last six months, they've been in the academy, and I'm happy to report that tomorrow evening, they will be graduating from the Highlands Ranch Law Enforcement Academy. They will take next week off to enjoy some time, and then they will get back into it the week of Christmas. They'll be in the field training officer program for a few months, and then the beginning of April, they will be out on their own, and will be fully staffed with all of our officers out in the field, so.
The only front range community to be fully staffed.
Awesome.
Absolutely.
Merry, nothing says Merry Christmas like...
And that is all I have to report.
On that being, you might have noticed the press release, both Georgetown apparently has had massive resignations and is going to find it harder, and then there was one Morrison abandoned or terminated their police department.
Shut down their police department, I know it's...
Vancouver that were able to.
Yeah, we'd be out of a job. All right.
I have no report, but I am offended that Councilor Holland didn't ask if public works had everything we needed.
Just real quick, we applied to our Apple County open space for an additional grant this year, so we found out that grant for $49,000 to resurface the High Line canal in our section is funded in our full request.
Excellent.
So we'll be getting that money next year.
Woo-hoo.
Well done.
I guess you don't get to make a remark.
You've heard enough of me tonight. My microphone on the other side was working.
No report, just want to wish you all a happy holiday season. I hope you enjoy it with friends and family and however you choose to celebrate. So enjoy your time.
City clerk? Anything? Nope? City attorney?
It's just, it's been another great year working with you guys, and I'll echo Chris's comments about the staff. You guys have heard me say this before, but it's just a real pleasure to work with such a smart group up there and down here, and I wish you all a very happy holiday.
Thank you. All right. Mayor pretend.
Okay. Now that I have the microphone, I certainly would be remiss if I didn't, I'm going to ditto Chris's thank you list because it was exhaustive and it was very good, but very appreciative of everything everybody's done. And I also want to add my wishes for a great holiday season to you all. Beyond that, I move to go into executive session pursuant to CRS section 24-6-4024F for the purpose of discussing personnel matters related to the performance and compensation of the city manager.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Eber?
Aye.
Counselor Holland?
Aye.
Counselor Wheel?
Aye.
Counselor Sheldon?
Aye.
Counselor Blum?
Aye.
Counselor Maguire?
Aye.
All right, and we will be returning back here most likely. Yes, well, yes, because we will not adjourn immediately.
Okay, well, then I'll just leave this crap here.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good, yeah. I made sure when I reviewed. Who knows what goes on out there in Sheridan?
Hey, thank you all. Happy holidays. Happy holidays. Happy holidays. You might get a card from the government. You're right. No, you're right. I, I... Mindlessly did it. Oh, yeah. All the microphones off? No, but I'll make sure. Yeah.[1619.15]
Do a budget review there.[420.13]
No, you're right. I, I miserably did it.
All the microphones off.
No, but I'll make sure.
You.
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 The time is now 10:52 PM, and the executive session has been concluded.
You.
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 The participants in the executive session were started that end.
Robert Eber.
Earl Holman.
Randy Wheel.
Dan Sheldon.
Al Blum.
Susan McGuire. And Catherine Ducharme. And myself, Katie Brown. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I ask that you state your concerns to the record. Hearing none. I will entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Nope.
No, not yet.
Second.
Wrong motion.
Damn it! Damn it, Jim!
Not that motion.
Okay, somebody else.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I move that we direct staff to execute the decisions of the direction that was.
Oh, there's no decisions made in the, yes.
The direction that was discussed in the executive session.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, that passes unanimously?
Move to adjourn. See, Randy and I seconded together.
Let's go! Hey, put it up here.
Come and save life.
Hey, put it up here.
Hey.
We're a good in here.
All right.
That's a wrap.
That's a wrap!
You're not going to miss being on city council now!
Susan, have a good trip!
Absolutely.
Good job.
Thank you.